I did.
Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now 1:04 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of September 11th, 2018, is called to order. Marilyn, are there any individuals who wish to address the Board of Education this afternoon?
Yes, I have two people who have given me this form. If anyone else has one, I'd be happy to take it. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to address the board. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments heard during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people, and disrespecting anyone by name will be gavelled down and asked to cease. The public participation guidelines state that forms must be submitted prior to the beginning portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. Do I have all the forms? Okay, so, the two people that I have are Gary Winok and Wendy Zadab. So... Oh, okay. And as soon as you're ready, Wendy, I'll do the timer and...
Fantastic. I don't know protocol. Did you want me to sit or stand?
That is fine, Wendy. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
I do have a handout for you, and I also want to just share my card so that you can contact me after this presentation if you have any questions. So, my name is Wendy Zadab, and I am the Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. And I'm here today to really thank the Department of Education for making the really great choice of moving from PSAT, or moving to PSAT 8-9 from M-Step at eighth grade. The handout that I have for you has two sides, and we obviously have an infographic on one side, and then if you flip it over, on the other side, you see a Detroit News editorial that was submitted by MASSP's president, Steve Carlson, who's the principal at Sandusky Junior/Senior High School. And in Steve's editorial, you can see why he, as a high school principal, middle school principal, supports the use of PSAT 8-9. He also goes into this article and talks about, not only why is it good for educators, but why is it good for parents and why is it good for students? So, if you get the chance, or if you didn't have the opportunity to catch that editorial in the news, I just wanted you to be aware that that was submitted and published. On this infographic, we really wanted to just highlight some of these really positive things that are happening in the field. There's not many times when Brian Winston came to our main conference at MASSP, and he made a presentation about his assessment vision a couple of years ago. And it's pretty unusual that at a conference where the state superintendent talks about assessment and change, that he gets a standing ovation. But at our conference, when he made the presentation and said that he wanted to move from M-Step at eighth grade to PSAT 8-9, he had a room of 500 principals stand up and literally applaud that decision. So, why do we feel so positively about making this change? This infographic really helps to lay it out for you. The most important thing, really, to us is that timely, actionable results. I can't stress to you what an amazing partner the College Board has been to middle school and high school principals in the field. The College Board does an amazing job. They have hired, you know, a team of four people that are literally all over the state of Michigan, supporting schools, doing presentations. Our M-Step vendor has never done a presentation of any kind, working with districts on data, helping people to look at those reports and to be able to, you know, make improvements. So, that's a huge piece that the College Board does. That's all free of charge. The other thing that we get that's really substantial is an amazing data protocol that we can use, because everybody has their own portal. Students set up their own College Board accounts. They can actually look at the test items from the test that they took. There is total transparency of the test. We never get to see M-Step test items. With M-Step, when you get a report as a parent, or you get a report as a student, they talk about targets and claims, which basically means we're shooting at a target in the dark, because we don't get to see exactly what those test items look like and what students are being asked to do. So, it's a significant shift in terms of what schools can do to make improvements and adjustments in terms of curriculum and instruction. So, for us, one of the things that has come up periodically is concerns about alignment. So, I just kind of wanted to dispel some of those maybe misperceptions about alignment. We did a survey of our membership, and we said, "What class are eighth graders taking in math?" Eighth grade math is either below or above many students in our state. So, in our survey, we found that about 50% of the students in the state were taking math classes above eighth grade, during eighth grade. So, that means they're taking Algebra I, or they're taking geometry, or they're taking an extended algebra, something that is beyond eighth grade math. So, we really like the breadth and depth of PSAT 8-9, because it actually measures standards that are below eighth grade and above eighth grade. So, it gives a larger range, which is actually a better measure of what math classes students are taking at eighth grade. With M-Step, they're literally just being surveyed on eighth grade standards alone, which for many is actually behind. It's not providing that window to the future. It's just a reflection on what they've done in the past. So, I have some other points on this infographic that'll give you an opportunity to kind of see some of the things that are going on. But I really wanted you to just be aware that as secondary school principals, we're extremely supportive of the shift to PSAT 8 at eighth grade. It has been incredibly well-received. I got a text from a principal just this morning saying, "Can't wait, you know, to work with my middle school more closely, looking forward to this transition and to seeing things move forward." So, with five minutes, it doesn't give us a lot of time to have discussion, but I'd be more than happy to come back at a future time and show you, literally take you into the portal and show you the type of reports we get, the immediacy of results, or to work with you individually if anyone has any questions. Thank you for your time.
Wendy?
And Mr. Winok, Gary Winok?
We're ready when you are.
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Gary Winok. Out of full disclosure, I want to say I was a county coordinator for the Patrick Colbeck campaign. I was also the former, I was a Republican Vice Chairman of my county. I have resigned from the Republican Party. I don't care about that. I understand Pat lost the election, and that doesn't come into the argument that I wanted to address, which was the social study standards. I believe he was right, and the other people that had worked with him on this focus group. So, I went to one of your listen and learn sessions in Saginaw, and the first topic that was brought up was whether we were a democracy or a republic. And the guy said, "Well, you know, you'd have one group over here saying it was a republic, another group over here a democracy, and another group in the back that couldn't care which." It's like, wait a minute. When I was in sixth grade, I raised my hand when I asked what form of government we were. This is back in 1969. And I said a democracy. And the teacher just about went through the roof. So, I says, "Okay, you know, we're not a democracy, we're a republic, we're this." Seventy-five, I was in 12th grade government class. Raised my hand, couldn't remember that answer. The guy said, "You're right, it's democracy." I said, "Wait a minute, that's not what I said in sixth grade." So, I raised my hand, I said, "Would you please..." He said, "Well, we used to be a constitutionally limited republic, but we're getting more like a democracy." I guess the point to it is, I talked to the gentleman that was running this listen and learn session afterwards, and I asked him a few questions, because I figure if you're going to be supporting an issue, you should be able to talk to both sides. So, the first question I asked him was, "Was there ever a black Speaker of the House?" And he's going, "Not to his recollection." Now, this is the stuff my wife and I use. These are the first seven black legislators that we're in after the Civil War. This gentleman over here was Joseph Haynes Rainey. He was elected to the House of Representatives, and you'll be hard-pressed to find it on Google. It says he was the leader of the House. Well, the leader of the House is the Speaker of the House. This gentleman was two seats away from the Presidency of the United States. He didn't seem to know that. I asked him about the first civil rights law that was ever enacted. Well, that was back in 1875. It was put up by Charles Sumner, who was a replacement for Dan Webster, and the gentleman died before his law got passed. But as I laid out in here for you, you can look up those gentlemen that are on that Courier &amp; Ives lithograph that shows them. I explained who Joseph Haynes Rainey is in this thing. Also, another prominent black historian was William C. Nell's, who wrote "American Revolution and Sketches of Several Distinctly Colored Persons, To Which Were Added to a Brief Summary of the Condition and Prospects." Anyways, it's written on there. This gentleman was a historian. They explain what history was about by a gentleman called Charles Coffin, who wrote several books on American history and his view of history. I asked the gentleman about, you know, because the other question came up about, you know, who were the target of the Ku Klux Klan? If you go back and you look, it will say that there were 3,466 blacks that were lynched, but it also says there were about 1,297 whites, telling you that the actual target was Republicans. It was just easier to tell a black Southern Democrat from a white Southern, I mean, a white, a black Southern Republican from a white Southern Republican, because they blended in with the white Southern Democrats. And it's kind of hard voting if you're not around. The other part, we talked to some of the teachers that were there talking about the standards, was the missing of the pastors that had actually worked on the Revolutionary War. And I listed you a group of them back there. One of them was actually the first Speaker of the House, who was Frederick Augustus Mullenberg. His brother was John Peter Gabriel Mullenberg, who happened to be raised to the rank of Major General in the Revolutionary War. There's a lot of things that are left out of our American history. My concern for our students is their lack of learning. We have a sign in Lincoln looking for help wanted, and it says, "Help wanted. Must be able to count change back to customer." I'm sorry, the five minutes went faster than I expected. Thank you for your time.
You, thank you very much.
Okay. That concludes our audience communication. Moving back to the Committee of the Whole Agenda, the next item on our agenda is a presentation on spring 2018 Michigan Student Test of Educational Progress, also known as the M-Step. Presentation of the results and the 2018-19 Assessment Plan. This past year's M-Step administration saw us move to over 99% of our students testing online, which was brought up earlier this morning, with results showing both areas of concern as well as promise. This presentation this afternoon will also include a walkthrough of what this year's assessment system will look like. This is an information presentation only and does not require any action on the part of the board. We have two presenters, Vanessa Kiesler and Andy Middlestead, and they will be using a PowerPoint for their presentation, which we believe we have copies. Thank you very much, and welcome both Andy and Vanessa.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Here we are with assessment right after lunch. I don't know if assessment is better right before or right after lunch, but here we are. Glad to be here today. I'm going to walk us through a presentation that covers three areas, more or less, that was explained. Vanessa will jump in with any improved commentary if I need to, need the help. So, we're happy to walk through some stuff. Again, we're going to talk about the results from this last spring, talk a little bit about what's happening in science with the field tests that we're doing, and then talk about what this year's test version looks like that we've touched on a little bit already during the day today. So, first, it's been mentioned nearly 99% of schools administered the M-Step online this last spring. When we switched to online assessment first in 2015, we were in the low 80%-ish, which was an amazing start for us, going from no online to over 80% online. That was incredible. And the fact that we've been able to move from there to 99% of schools online by this spring is really an amazing feat. It's really a great testimony to all the work that our schools have been doing around technology and infrastructure and things. So, that's very encouraging to us on that sense. We also have fast results. With the M-Step, we have preliminary results back to schools within 24 to 48 hours, and then our final results are given before Labor Day each year, actually a day earlier this year than last year. So, that's good. We're proud to be able to do that and get that out there. And this is exciting for us, because as far as we're aware, no other state or system can deliver preliminary results as fast as we do. So, that's very, we're very proud of that, and we're happy to do that for our schools.
And one of the things you learn quickly when you work with or supervise assessment is that if you're going to, if someone's going to tout your horn, you better tout your own horn. So, I do want to echo what Andy said. Our move to online was very successful. Many other states, you've probably read in the news, they've had to shut it down, they've pulled tests back. So, we continue to thank the field. We thank the staff here. We thank our vendors for working hard with us to make sure. Assessment really shouldn't be a big drama for kids, any more than it has to be. It should happen and go on, and we've seen vast improvements in testing time, implementation, all of those pieces to make it more of what it should be, which is an event that happens, but really, instruction is what we're focused on in the classroom. So, and like Andy said, we are the only state that turns preliminary results this fast or anywhere close to this fast. We do it faster than some vendors. So, we are very proud of that.
So, moving on with a couple of other things that we're excited about. On this chart, there's two things. On the top, there's a table there that talks about total incident report counts. So, if you see on the left of that chart, it says where we were at in 2015, it's about 9,500. Now, we're down to just over 1,000. So, that's an over 90% decrease in the number of incident reports. Quickly, what an incident report is, it doesn't mean that something went wrong, but it's the number of times an educator or a principal has to alert us that something went funny in the administration. There's a fire drill, or a fire alarm, a student got ill, something that interrupted the test itself. And really, the fact that we've been able to decrease that much is really a great testimony to how well our schools have adopted the new assessment, have gotten used to it, they've learned about it. Our team continues to put out lots of guidance and training manuals. So, it's really just a measure that the test was bumpy at first. Certainly, it was a brand-new assessment, and it was online, but it has really smoothed out over the last four years. So, that is an exciting chart that we love to talk about. And the second table on here is, we talk about the testing time, and we'll talk about this a little bit later when we talk about what our assessment plan looks like for this year. But since 2015, we've decreased testing time a lot since that year, and that is a good thing. We agree that we want to only test as much as we have to, and we've been able to make some cuts through various means over those years. So, on the right side of that table, you'll see where we're at right now with the Michigan Merit Exam and then the M-Step there. So, moving right ahead into this last year's results, we'll have three different tables, a math and ELA, a social studies table. This is our English Language Arts table. If you see on the left-hand column there, those are our percent proficient for this school year, and on the right, you will see the percent change from 17 to 18. Every year, there's fluctuations. We see this every year. Every year, there seems to be points of pride, and then points of places we need to look at closer. This year, we saw some increases, albeit not large necessarily, in third and fourth grade. That's particularly exciting to us, because that's where we've been investing a lot of time and effort, not just as a department, but around the state in early literacy and reading skills, all in an effort to support the Read by Grade 3 law that is coming down. So, we're glad to see some increases there. However, certainly, we're not glad to see some decreases in the other grades. We saw some larger dips in fifth grade and eighth grade in English Language Arts, and I'll talk about a possible cause for that in a moment, but this is what the table looks like for English Language Arts. Mathematics, nothing drastic. We see a couple of grade levels there, four and six, either staying steady or with a small increase, and then in some grades, there's some minor decreases as well.
And we, as we continue to implement the Read by Grade 3 law and the larger supports around literacy, we also are working to expand our efforts to have that, to include numeracy as well. So, I think the kind of staticness you see in some of the math gives us evidence that we need to continue the conversation, not only around literacy, which is vitally important, but around numeracy and those skills for our students.
Mathematics, we talked about that. So, social studies, this is our social studies table. We see some drops in fifth and eighth grade, but then a good increase in 11th grade. Social studies, like all of our grade levels, they do fluctuate year to year, and these are the scores we have.
Yeah, and certainly, resolving the ongoing work around social studies standards will help provide greater clarity and direction to the field around what students need to learn and be able to do. So, currently, the former standards are in place. But again, we are working, look, we've been working with the board in the field and everyone on getting to social studies standards that are rigorous and help Michigan students be where they need to be, and that, I think, will, that's an important, standards come before assessments. So, that's an important part of seeing our scores increase here.
Next slide is our 11th grade SAT results. Point of note here, the changes here are total, are score points, not percentages. So, we'll see here under the SAT total score, from 17 to 18, there's a seven and a half point drop. That's not a percentage, that's a point drop in the score. And then math was down 4.6, and then a little bit down on the evidence-based reading and writing. That's the ELA score that comes from the SAT. So, a couple of points about the numbers that we've seen, some things that are going on. I mentioned all the support, the governor and the legislature and the department and the districts around the state are putting into early literacy are leading to results. They're not large gains, but those scores were going down in past years, and now they're going back up. So, I want to be excited about that and say some things might be taking root in all the efforts we're putting into the early literacy efforts. Again, the legislative requirement to reduce testing time, that was the requirement we put into place last year for the 2018 M-Step, where we were asked to cut the testing time down to no more than three hours on average for math and ELA combined. So, when you make that cut, we had to cut 20 to 30% of the assessment out to reach that testing time restriction. We were able to do that through a variety of different means. One of the things we had to do, and I'll talk about it in the next bullet, largest change happened in grades five and eight, English Language Arts, is we had to take out the performance tasks that were part of fifth and eighth grade. They were originally also part of three through eight originally, but we took the performance tasks out of fifth and eighth grade, English Language Arts. And then we also removed all the performance tests out of the mathematics exam in all grades three through eight. So, if you go back to the table on the English Language Arts, you know, if you, at this point, it's a hypothesis, but our biggest drops in English Language Arts were in fifth grade and eighth grade, where we removed those performance task types events between 2017 and 2018. I will say, this question just came up. We did do a process this summer. Normally, when you change your test, to an extent that seems, I'll use the word severe, but a larger extent, you want to double-check to make sure that your cut scores and your standards are still in place. We did do a process this summer involving 100 educators from around the state to validate our cut scores and our performance levels, and the outcome of that effort was that our cut scores were still valid and still accurate, even after our test changed between 2017 and 18. So, we did do that. So, statistically, our scores are still fitting on the scale like they should, but that doesn't account for any possible experience differences that our students may have had in fifth and eighth grade. There's not an easy way necessarily to...
And Andy may talk about this a little bit more later when we go through the test changes, but while we did drop the performance task, the team worked hard to look at tests, everything, sitting behind every test is a test blueprint, which kind of, like a blueprint suggests, lays out how the test is going to be built. So, they worked hard to retain still writing components, critical thinking, constructive response pieces, as opposed to only cutting, they didn't just cut anything that required a longer answer. They retained some of those, and so it's still a mix of item types. The performance task is that longer event at the, the longer kind of separate event. But we did, we did know that it was important that the M-Step, even while we cut time, that we didn't cut time from those items that assess deeper thinking, critical thinking entirely.
And we're able to retain a long-written essay in each grade level, because that's an important part of our standards, and what we want to have as part of our assessment system is an opportunity for students to write and demonstrate their writing skills through a longer essay, not just an interactive online item, for example. So, moving forward to the science field tests, as folks have seen likely, we did a statewide field test this year for science. As we know, in 2015, we adopted new science standards. The science standards, the switch from our old science standards to these ones was larger than some of our other transitions between sets of standards. These standards are very different from our older ones, the Glicks and the Huskies, if you remember, and they require a different kind of assessment. So, an example is, these standards are really three-dimensional, and they require three-dimensional items. That digs into the fact that these items are moving beyond just science fact-recall-type situations, where, you know, memorize some science things about rocks and then spit back your answer on a multiple-choice-based question. They're actually asking students to really dig into science concepts and move to three dimensions, they're called, to work through science-type problems. So, it's a larger change from, it's not just an adjustment, it was a large change in our science standards. So, we moved forward with statewide field testing, and our plan this year was to field test some clusters of items, so it was portions of items this year. And then next spring, we'll do a statewide field test of the whole test blueprint. So, we'll give the whole test next year that students should be ready to experience moving forward. So, why do we do statewide field testing? It allows us to avoid double-testing. It allows us to avoid giving the M-Step science based on our old standards, and also giving a field test about our new science assessment items, so it allows us to avoid double-testing. It also allows us to avoid creating a test that's not fully aligned to either the old or the new standards. We went this route because we're kind of learned from our lessons of the past. When we transitioned from the older math and ELA standards to our current ones, we, it was the MEEP test at the time, we went forward with an effort of trying to create the MEEP test that would cover both the old standards and the new standards. So, it would, it would work for any district's situation. If they were eager and they wanted to move forward with new standards right away, the test would work with that. If they weren't quite ready yet, they could still lean on their old standards. And what that did is, it created a unclear picture of what the assessment would cover, and it actually was quite difficult for our schools to figure out what should they be teaching and not. This approach allows us to say, "We're moving forward with building a test on the new standards and only the new standards, so go ahead and start teaching to those new standards and work with us to create this test as best as possible." So, part of this I've talked about, the general test item development cycle is, you know, we identify standards. So, with the science, we identified these in the fall of 2015. We've had educators around the state write and review items. We pilot-test items. We've done this in the past years, where we've just involved some students, some smaller classroom-based things, to see how items are working. And then the stage we're at now, is we want a field test with larger amounts of students than review. We get data back after a field test, and then we spend portions of our summer with educators reviewing our items to see how the data performed and look for bias, sensitivity issues. We want to make sure items work well for what they're supposed to do, and they work well for Michigan students.
So, we just wanted to take this little sidebar into a little bit of Measurement 101 for all of you who are hoping that this presentation would include that. You got lucky today, it did.
Every time after lunch, it's good.
Yes, yes. But to, just mostly to reassure everyone at the table and everyone listening, that no Michigan student sees an item until we're really confident about what it's doing, that it's behaving well in the sense of it's not, some of you are classroom teachers, you know, when you write a classroom assessment, you hand out the test, and everybody takes it, and nobody gets question three right, and you reread it later, and you think, "Well, why would any, I mean, that item is terrible. You know, I wrote a terrible test. Of course they didn't get that item right." You know, this was my experience as a teacher. I don't write the items now, just in case you're wondering. So, when we, for statewide summative assessment, we follow industry standards, best practice, research-developed processes. We involve educators at all the stages of the process, so there's always multiple perspectives, multiple people, and there's many stages, so that by the time it's on an M-Step and it's going to contribute to a score that a school or a student gets, we know what it's doing as an item. I just want to, that's something that's a little bit behind the scenes, so we thought we'd take a minute and, and review that component of our assessment process.
Can I ask a quick question? So, you, did you want to go first, or...
No, 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 I just want to be sure, I was just trying to say, I have a question.
Eileen?
And Dr. Z.
But she's first.
Yes, Nikki, Eileen, and Dr. Z.
So, items don't ever get to students until, items that count towards a total score that would have impact do not get to students until you've done that process. They might have taken maybe a few questions that don't count towards their total score, we just don't know.
Yes.
Right? The ones that do count are computer-adaptive in some capacity, correct?
They're considered operational, so when you, and again, right now, the science field test is happening differently. In the past, almost every test that Michigan students takes has operational items, and it has some number of items that are being field-tested. And so, those don't count. Kids don't know, nobody knows, but it helps us continually replenish the item bank. With this, because of the big shift, when they're taking the science test, all of those are field-test items right now. There's no kind of counting for the score. So, by the time we have an operational... So by the time we have an operational test, all of those items will have gone through multiple kind of trials with, with real students and for us to look at, this item worked, it didn't, it's biased, it's, and by bias, we mean you can see differences in how it's answered by student demographics.
Yeah.
Or has other issues?
It's also a matter of testing time, too. We're trying to be really cognizant of testing time, and I mentioned the double testing, we don't want to give an hour-long science M-Step based on the old standards and then have a student take forty-five minutes of field test items, that would be a bad thing testing time-wise, so we're trying to help that as well.
So, students have access to these items after the fact? Oh, okay, I thought you said something like that, okay.
We have access to them, so we see how they behaved, and we work with our committees, and we, they go through this kind of process of review, and we would, if any of you want to observe an item review process, let us know. We do it, again, we bring educators in, there's, it's really cool if you ever want to come and see, and they look at the items and the stats on it, kind of who, how did, how many kids answered it right, how many kids answered it wrong, what are the demographic differences? There's also an element of just read it, and you know, the old, if it asks about a schooner and nobody's ever seen a boat or a schooner or whatever, then it's not a great item, because you have to have knowledge outside of the, the test to know how to answer that item. So, a lot of the criticisms of standardized testing, those are things that measurement psychometrics people work hard to think about how we could reduce those, there's never, you know, measurement is an imperfect science, but things like, don't ask every kid about a schooner when nobody knows what a schooner is, we go, we have processes in place to, to try to help with that sort of thing. But yes, what, if you, any of you want to come and observe, any of our review committees, now's a great time as we work through the science field test.
Thank you, Eileen?
So, I, I just, I was rereading the ESSA requirements. First of all, I commend you for reading them and taking them to heart because it's a lot. But one of the things that it calls for is testing higher-order thinking and whether or not students understand content. And there's mention of using portfolios and extended performance tasks, which we've dropped. I mean, we never did have portfolios, but we've dropped the performance tasks. I wanted to find out what those look like, really briefly, and how long they take, and why we would not include those going forward. I, I recognize the severe limitations on the length of the test, but I also am looking at ESSA, we have a review next spring. We didn't turn in an assessment plan, we didn't have to, but that means that we're in uncharted territory, and when there are distinct requirements listed and we don't meet those, then that's a red flag. I'm just moving away from, pushing off from the fact that we are in triage over special education and thinking, here we go again.
Sure, sure. So, you're asking about the difference between a performance task and what we maybe have replaced it with in a long, sure. Well, the exercise we had to go through last, it was really last summer when we had to cut down the testing times, we had to look at, what can we cut to meet this testing time cap? One of the things we had to do is, are there, frankly, are there pieces we could remove that would be easier to remove, test design-wise? And the other thing is, we, we started in 2015 with a test blueprint that we believe met our state standards in terms of alignment. We cut it down once in 2016, and we have to cut it down again. So the exercise we had to look at carefully was, how many standards can we cut out of our assessment and still call it aligned? So, speaking to the performance task, what those look like, the performance task events in English Language Arts and really math both involved a variety of reading pieces, you know, multiple reading stimuli, so you read a reading passage that might be narrative in nature, and then an informative-type reading passage, and maybe you have some diagrams and things like that, and then you have to respond to multiple questions about those multiple stimuli, we call them, including one long-written response. So, it was, they were more complex and they involved more critical thinking because you're taking multiple stimuli that's coming at the student and asking them to synthesize it and then respond to some questions. What we're doing now, we still have that long-written response, like I mentioned, but it's one passage and one prompt, we call it, and so you might read a story, and then you would have a prompt that's, please summarize the main conflict in this passage that you read, and then the student writes an essay. So it's still a good opportunity to write and to read a good passage, but it's not quite as complex in terms of the number of things a student has to read and process before they respond to the questions, but it still measures many of those writing skills that, you know, are important. Another question we sometimes get is, why didn't we leave the performance tasks and then delete a whole bunch of the other content out of the computer adaptive portion of that? We couldn't do that, because if we would have done that, we would have removed, making up the number thirty standards of testing as opposed to three. While the performance tasks are really robust and they're good tools, they only measure a handful of standards as opposed to thirty that you might be covering in the same amount of time in the other portions of the test. Does that help?
Yeah, and I have a couple of other questions, too, but, so that's, that's for, that's the writing portion, and that happens in fifth and eighth grade, those, are those in all three through eight?
Yep, the change, I'm gonna just jump ahead to this table a little bit.
Should I wait and have you do it then, or, because the other, the other questions that I want to ask are...
Maybe let's wait a few minutes.
Let's do it then.
Yeah, yeah, because we'll come back to a lot of this.
And what does a, what does a performance task look like in math?
Andy?
It's pretty much the same?
PowerPoint's going crazy. A performance task in math is similar, but different. You know, there's multiple stimuli that a student has to look at, it might be a reading passage, it might be some graphics or some diagrams and things, and then there still are multiple questions that all tie to that same common set of stimuli. There's not a long-written essay like you would see in English Language Arts, but there's still a, a series of questions of different complexity that a student has to respond to after they've read through a variety of material for that performance type of event.
Okay, then I have one more sticky wicked. Because it's computer adaptive, are you able to tailor the performance tasks to what you see before that in the test, so that if you see a child...
The performance task itself was not adaptive.
Okay.
So the performance tasks, when we had them, were matrix sampled around students, so that, for example, in a classroom, every student participated in a computer adaptive portion of the test, and then they may have gotten, for an example, one of four different performance tasks that were spiraling around the classroom, like you say. Does that make sense?
Well, and I just want to make sure that that makes sense to everybody else. So, what, what, when you've got a computer adaptive assessment, which we have ninety-nine percent of the kids taking right now, then you have the opportunity, if you've got the ability to write it, to, if a child is being tested in math, but might be tested, might actually understand it through algebra, you can move a child up into an algebraic performance task, which it sounds like we didn't do, or you could have...
Yeah, I mean, they, the performance tasks didn't have a long enough lifespan.
Lifespan to do it.
But I, you're right, that's a possibility if they were part of the, it's, it's always a possibility to try to work into the algorithm how items are offered to students, but we hadn't gotten there.
Right. All right, thanks. Okay.
And we'll get more into some of that in a little bit.
Thank you, Eileen, Dr. Z.
I'm looking at page four there and see the social studies, grade five, about how many students are tested in, in grade five?
In grade five, there's, in each of our grades, there's between one hundred and thirteen and one hundred and fifteen thousand students.
Okay, so, average of one hundred and fourteen thousand. So, this difference of, difference of three point three, change, that's percent, so we're looking at, three thousand is each percent, so we're looking at ten thousand, roughly ten thousand, that three point three percent change is roughly ten thousand more students who are provisioned or advanced.
Three point three percent of one hundred and fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-four fifty? You're trying to quantify how big of a change this is in actual students?
Yes.
So roughly a ten percent change would be about ten thousand students, I mean, that's like a rough ballpark, because there's a little bit more, but...
Okay, so one percent would be about a one thousand, eleven hundred students. So this three point three percent change would be three thousand...
Thirty-seven hundred.
Thirty-seven hundred?
If you take fifteen hundred and three percent.
So, so that, that percentage change represents about thirty-seven hundred students more who are proficient or advanced profi, or from, or I should say, in this case, less here, okay. So I just want to get, get some concrete ideas to what the percentages represent. And I've been, I, I've shared this concern with, with certain others, but when we compare the, for example, on page three, the point three percent change, that, that seems to me to be probably less than maybe the margin of error or, or the variation between the classes, because we're not comparing, it's not the same class that's taking the third grade test, it's a different class, and the class itself might have a percent, three-tenths of one percent difference in their native abilities or, or overall scores. So, and I, I guess my comment is simply, let's not overstate these minuscule changes, either positive or negative. I, I think we lose credibility with the, the people who understand numbers, and they're the people we need to persuade.
Right, I think that's a good point. I mean, I think the point you went to the first time is that when you talk state administrative data, when you talk population data, difference is a difference, it really is. Point three is some number of kids, so you don't have to talk statistically significant. Your point about cohort differences is, is true, I mean, you, there's a lot of things in these numbers, they're just different. Point three more third graders this year were proficient than last year. We agree as well that they're not large differences, but like Andy said, two points. One, moving state test data is slow and hard, so it's, it's not, it's not the first thing that changes, it comes later. And two, we had been seeing declines and we saw something in the positives. So we just want to say, there is reason for hope, but we are not trying to say this is a massive increase, nor are we trying to say that it is where we need to be. So, hope, be hopeful, but be honest and keep redoubling our efforts and use it to, for that continuous improvement. So it's, it's a good point.
Okay.
I just have a question, just following up to Richard's question, because you make inference on slide five that the support of governor and legislature around, legislature around early literature, literacy is leading to results. So to Richard's point and to what you just said, to me, that we're premature in making that inference. And then I guess my other question is, is was there any thing, was there anything else that was going on? You know, while I support some of the supports that come, that came with that legislation, you know, I, I don't know if I'm ready to cheerlead that legislation, and I don't know that we should be making a bold statement like that in that inference just yet, based on that small number you said that it, we don't have to look at statistical, statistical significance, but then also what, what's the confounding factors?
So you're calling an excellent question about causal claims versus possible hypotheses, I think Andy used that term. We are, are Mary Partners, Michigan Educational Research Institute, as many of you know, is going after a federal grant to evaluate the Read by Grade Three law and its effects, which would allow us to more conclusively, to your point, Pam, say, it worked, it didn't work, other things confounded it, it worked, these three things worked, but this didn't, which is what we really need to fully interrogate the law. So I think the point is taken, maybe we need to back our language down from is leading to results, but suggests progress in an area of focus, is, is what we're trying to say. You're right.
Aggression.
It's too early to say we know for sure, but it's also, it's also a good sign, it could have gone the other direction, so.
I mean, and if you said it's a good sign, that's good, but just, you know, going that far is a...
Point taken.
Okay, are, are we ready to go on to the assessment system for this school year?
Are we leaving the other?
Oh, science?
We can ask one more.
Yeah, we can ask at the end, yeah, I was gonna wait at the end.
Okay.
So, briefly to finish up science.
Oh, sorry.
Typically, we don't provide data results on field testing, because like we mentioned earlier, we don't know yet if the test content is, is reliable yet, we don't know if it's functioning right, we don't know if it has possible bias or sensitivity issues and things like that. That being said, it's really hard for folks to give a field test or any test at all and not get any results back. So kind of a, a compromise that we're doing this year is, we are providing aggregated summary data to our districts based on their field test results. So they will be able to see some results based on that, they'll be able to say, well, how well did my district do on the field test data, and they'll be able to compare it to the state levels and, you know, other possible dis, they'll see how other districts may have done. It's more of a, just a quick snapshot of how they did, because we don't want to give out student-level data and things if we don't know yet if those items are working correctly, because we would hate for anything high stakes to be looked at in terms of, Andy didn't do well on the science field test when we don't know yet if the field test was working right or not. So, they will get some aggregated summary data, then due to the field test nature of the 2018 and 19 science tests, we have requested a waiver from the US Department of Ed for reporting statewide science scores. We will still calculate participation rates on the science assessment, because we want everyone to take it, but we will not be submitting a percent of Michigan students that were proficient in science score to the US Department of Ed. So, that's a technical process that we have to do with the Department of Ed there. Now, moving forward to Michigan's assessment system for 2018 and 19. We've talked about a few of these different things already today, but this chart kind of summarizes the, the landscape of the last four years and then this coming spring. So looking at the top, 2015 was the first year of M-Step, it had some bumps with it, but it went very, very well. That was our first transition to new, a new assessment, the first new assessment really in forty years in Michigan, and it was our first time moving online. In 2016 and 17, some changes happened. We removed the ELA performance tasks in grades three, four, six, and seven, so all ELA grades except for five and eight. We transitioned to the, use the, the SAT plus essay in 11th grade for ELA and math as part of the Michigan Merit Exam. The SAT we use in 11th grade does require the essay portion, so we do give the full SAT and their essay, and then we eliminated the M-Step, ELA, and math in 11th grade. In 2015, we gave the full ACT plus the full M-Step, ELA, and math, so there's a lot of testing for our 11th graders. And then in, we began giving the PSAT in ninth and 10th grade in 2016 and 17 as well. And we have a column here about why, why did we change these things? Really, this was a superintendent direction to reduce testing time, and we certainly agreed that there was a lot of testing going on, especially in high school, so that was the direction we took to modify that. In 2018, so that's back up to this year, we've talked about this, we cut the testing time at ELA and math in grades three through eight. That was a legislative requirement that we got to reduce our testing time to no more than three hours on average for ELA and math, and we did that. We, after the testing was done, we looked at our average testing times and we, we hit that mark, so that was encouraging, because you modify the assessment and you don't really know until you give it how long the test is really going to take, so it worked out really well, so we were able to do that successfully. Moving forward to this spring, this spring, a couple of different things are happening. We're transitioning the eighth grade mathematics and ELA test from the M-Step to the PSAT eight, nine, and we're doing that as part of our department assessment vision, and then also legislative language that requires assessments in grades eight to ten to be aligned to the college entrance portion of the Michigan Merit Exam. Also, this year, we are launching the optional use of benchmark assessments supported with some state investment. This gets into benchmark assessments that have been talked about for years around Michigan, and right now what's happening is, part of the Schools Aid Act allows us to have some funds to give out as grants to our districts that might want to purchase a benchmark assessment for their schools, and they're able to apply for a grant that could be used as a reimbursement to pay for those benchmark tests. So, we have a wider bank of benchmark assessments that folks are able to use now, moving forward. This chart I won't read, because it's got a lot on it, but this is really the snapshot of what our assessment system looks like in all of the grade levels here. K through two, we won't get into it today for sake of time, but K through two is a unique place where we have legislation that requires Michigan schools to take a K through two math and English Language Arts test, and then also we have the Read by Grade Three law that requires them to use on assessment in grades K through two to help prepare students to read well by third grade and be successful on their M-Step. So students, or schools are supposed to administer something in ELA math in terms of a benchmark assessment in those young grades. Then looking at grades three through seven here, again, we have M-Step, which is not changing this year, and we see as optional, district selective benchmark assessments. And those are the tests you hear a lot about, your I-readies, your NWA MAP tests, your Renaissance Learning, Smarter Balance, DRC Beacon, there's a variety of things out there that folks are using, and they're able to choose what they would like, and then reimburse for a portion of that. Eighth grade, as you see here, we have PSAT eight, nine, which we mentioned we're switching to this year, and then we have M-Step for science and social studies, and then they have the optional district... And then they have the optional district selective benchmark. And then we have, as it's been for the last number of years, we have PSAT in grade nine and 10. And then the Michigan Merit Exam still has the SAT with essay, the M-Step for science and social studies, and the ACT work keys exam. These are really just some summary points about what we've mentioned in that chart. So the M-Step, the Michigan Students' Test of Ed's progress, that'll be given to grades three through seven to measure student academic, student progress on academic standards in ELA and math. And in grades five and eight, that's where science and social studies occur. The PSAT eight-nine will be given to students in grade eight to measure student progress on academic standards in ELA and math and prepare for the SAT taken in high school. The PSAT eight-nine for students in grades nine and 10. And the ninth and 10th grade assessments for PSAT, those are not part of any statewide reporting or accountability system. They are tests that are taken, and then schools and the students will get results put into their portal from the College Board and then also to the school level as well. The Merit Exam, given to all students in grade 11, has three components, the SAT with essay, the M-Step for science and social studies, and the ACT work keys. Changing gears slightly to talk for a minute about the reimbursement for vendor-provided assessment options. These are those benchmark assessments again. Districts may select vendor-provided assessments that meet defined criteria. And we have a link to a fact sheet about all of the things we want to know about early literacy benchmark assessments. It's on our website. And then also, part of the 2018-19 State School Aid Act provides funding to reimburse these schools, like I mentioned, to help them pay for a component of their benchmark system. We don't think it's gonna be reimbursement for the full amount of what their cost might be, but it should pay for a good chunk and hopefully encourage some districts that might not be using these tools yet to start using some. And this briefly just talks about that reimbursement process. It's a formula grant that will be given out based on percentage number of students. So that will all go out in the December state aid payment if folks decide to apply for that grant. And then in February, we'll provide a report to the legislature talking about how many districts use what tools and how it worked and how well it went. We'll do that in February. Our last slide before we can take more questions. This is just a snapshot of what our 2019 test schedule looks like. We've really done a lot of work over the past several years also to constrain what I say our test footprint on the spring in our schools. While there's still a lot of bars up there on that chart, we really have been able to confine it pretty well to April and May, usually finishing before Memorial Day and staggering things so that not all grades are going on at the same time. That really seems to help schools be able to sort out some of their computer lab scheduling and things that they need to do. So this is what our test schedule looks like for this coming spring. Now we're ready for more questions.
Okay. So I'll begin with Tom and then move over to Cassandra.
Try to go quick. PSAT, we heard that they can see, that everybody can see the questions. Why can't we do that with the M-Step?
Well, there's a couple of different things going on. So the M-Step is a computer adaptive assessment, so it has a pool of items. So, and items are also very expensive. So we are not in a place where we can release all of our items, because we would have to replenish an entire computer adaptive assessment pool to release those. SAT is a fixed form assessment. It's not adaptive. They do release their forms for some of their administrations, which is a good thing. That is a useful tool. But there's also risks on that side, too, that there's a lot of test security risks and things if you're releasing forms and you don't have many forms available to rotate throughout your state and across the country and things like that. So there's pros and cons either way. But that's, we can't, we release all of our computer adaptive assessments. We couldn't, we just couldn't afford to replace them every year if we released them.
Okay. Do we use any S-Back Test Bank questions in our, for our testing?
Yes, we do.
About how much?
A hundred percent of our items are from their item bank, yes.
In ELA and math.
In ELA and math only.
In ELA and math, okay. And I was, you already talked about this fluctuation. You said fluctuations are natural from year to year, and then we claim that point three and point eight is some evidence of some success. So I find that a little bit odd. And also, if there was any, at what cost? I mean, if teachers are now having to spend a ton of time doing data observations, then maybe there's a downside as well. So, and then, I guess that's, oh, yeah. Field tests and pilot, I guess that's where some people, I mean, I've heard numerous times in the last few weeks, it was so bad that they didn't even want to release it. So, you know, I know that I'm hearing a little bit about why that's not necessarily the case. But, you know, I think, did, do field tests, when you're testing questions, does it, can't it be a pilot? Like, do you have to take everybody's, you know, you had to, you did it statewide. I mean, do you really have to do it for everybody? Or can't you get a statistical accurate result from just piloting? Or, you know, a percent of?
You can, but it's very difficult. So when we, if we were just to say we wanted to optionally offer a science field test, for example, you know, there's already enough testing in a lot of our schools, so it's very difficult to get the numbers we need to be able to create or get statistically relevant data, because you need a good number of students exposed to each test item to get a good data set to get some good analysis from. So it was a decision in the fact that we want to, one, get the data we need to evaluate our test items properly. But we also wanted to start the ball rolling on our students and our educators getting an idea what this test will look like. So it provides an opportunity for them to see it, interact with these new test items, because they are, they are different than what they were used to. They're not just multiple choice items. So part of it is a preparing and a professional development for educators and some exposure to these types of items for our students as well.
Thank you.
Cassandra?
So actually, Tom, his first question was along the lines of what I wanted to ask. I, I understand that there's a resource issue with us not being able to release the questions. But if you think about, at least originally, what the point of testing was, it's not about discipline, it's not about labeling, it's about improving student outcomes, right? And so from the student perspective, if, you know, I spent a lot of time in college. If I took a test and I got a score back of, say, 60 out of 100, but I never got to see the actual test, how the hell does that help me learn anything? And how am I expected to improve if I don't know where my deficiencies are and I don't know where I excelled? So I guess my question is, how do we communicate, not only with districts and schools on a level that allows them to use test scores to actually improve outcomes, but all the way down to the student level, if they can't ever see what they got wrong?
That's a really, it's a really good point. Like Andy said, there's a, there's a balance on releasing items, but let me back up a little. So the student does not only get, I was 60 out of 100 or I was proficient or not, and neither does the school or district. We do report claims and targets. Those help break down the standards into, I did, I did well on evidence on reading, and I did poorly on the research-based, research component. And I never remember the four claims, sorry. But you get, and then below that, there's targets. So there's more granular information. That's what's used in, by schools, by districts in their school improvement planning and their instructional rounds. It's, it's a little bit of a misnomer to say I have to see the question to know what I got wrong. That helps, but the question relates to a larger target, which relates to a larger strand. So it's not about just answering that question right. It's about what concepts didn't you get? We do release sample items. We never release items on the MEEP either, so it's not just a now thing. Certainly, if we had a very large investment of money and could have more items to be released, it's not that we're opposed. It's just we have to balance our operational constraints with, and find a way to get the information out for instruction that you're saying. So we do a lot of reports, a lot of training. We work closely with our ISD partners, with our SEPI partners, with a lot of partners to get the data out and to help explain to schools and districts how to interface the summative assessment data with all their local assessment data and other forms of data in a triangulated way.
Okay. But, so we release this information, and yet our scores aren't changing. So something we're doing is not working.
Sure.
So I guess from my perspective, it just seems like, I don't think the information we're providing is leading to better student outcomes. So is there a way to rethink what we're providing that could actually, you know, allow? I go back to my own example. If I get a test back and it says, well, you did really good on critical thinking, but you did really bad on spatial alignment. Now I have to go back and remember the test I took to figure out what was critical thinking and what was spatial alignment. I can't do that. And it doesn't help me if my professor gets that information and changes it for next year. I'm still stuck where I am. So I just think that something we're not doing is not adding up to increasing student outcomes, which makes me question the purpose of the testing. So I don't know what the answer is. I'm not expecting you to give me an answer today. But I think we really need to rethink what we're doing here, because it doesn't seem to be moving us in the direction we need to go. And the ultimate priority for me is helping that individual student understand what they need to learn, as opposed to what testing has become, which is, we need to take over a school, or we need to label a teacher ineffective, and we need to do all of this. That's not the point of testing, and we need to get away from that. And whatever we need to do needs to lead to increased student outcomes, and right now, we're just not there.
So releasing items might be part of the puzzle, but I take your point about the diagnostic measure we use isn't changing. So something's not happening correctly around, is it the fault of the measure? Or is it that we're not instructionally doing what we need to do? Is it that we're not supporting at the systems level, at the school, at the district, at the ISD? You know, there's a lot, it goes back to that causal point. So we could, let's say we released all our items, and our scores still could stay the same, because that's not the actual, it might be part of the problem, but I doubt it's the whole problem. And I will just use the blood pressure analogy. You know, if you go to the doctor and they take your blood pressure, and you come back and it's still bad, and they say, it's not necessarily the blood pressure's fault, it's if you went and ate pizza and sat on your butt, you probably aren't gonna have a better blood pressure later. So similarly with this, we could release the item so that people understand more about the items, but there has to be a concurrent focus on instruction and leadership and support.
Absolutely. The two have to go hand in hand, but one of them has to happen. Sorry, Nikki.
So I have Eileen next, but I want to comment on Cassandra's comment in that perhaps it is time for us as a department to look at the information that we are providing to the districts and to the schools, to ask them, is this information that you are getting from MDE helpful for you in using assessment as a piece of information that helps to inform instruction and helps to inform where you as a district need and school need to put your efforts in order to improve student outcomes? I think that's the question that you were asking.
Yes.
Okay. Okay? And now to Eileen.
And I would absolutely support that. You know, I served on the National Assessment Governing Board for eight painful years, because it was a real education, and it was a very informative one. We faced situations like this, too, except for the whole country. And one of the things that I've learned is that foresight doesn't really exist when you're in a crisis. It's a great idea, but it's hard to come by. Hindsight is painful, especially because we're gonna be having a review next year on our assessment plan, which, as we, I think I said already, you weren't required to submit, and we didn't. And we were restricted by the legislature in the length of time we could do. We are now looking at what S is calling for. They don't want us to just teach rote memorization. They want us, as are so many countries, moving to elaboration, the ability to use information, because the kids who are coming into school now have iPhones, they have iPads, not all of them, but enough of them do, so that just memorizing things is not going to be what they need for the future. They need to use the information and know it well. So I have a number of concerns that I would call middle site, because I think we've been through the crucible. Foresight did what we could, and I don't want to get to hindsight. I won't be here, all of you will be, looking back in potentially two years at an ESA review that showed we were not in alignment, that we lost our eighth grade longitudinal data, that we do not have writing adequately across the. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh-oh, I don't have to rewind, do I? I can't.
No, just going forward.
Okay. So foresight was where we were, which is, we're putting together the best plan we can envision that meets the needs of the state and the needs of children and the needs of schools on instruction. What we could be in, in two and a half years, is in hindsight, which is out of, out of conformance with, out of compliance with ESA, which calls for higher order thinking and understanding of content. Okay? We have some outside variables coming at us. One is that ESA, or sorry, NAEP did not use to assess writing very often for fourth and eighth grade. But they did last year, and they, from time to time, do what's called a state report. That state report for Michigan, for writing in fourth and eighth grade, will be released in the next two or three months. One of the concerns that I have is that, from what I understand, we now have a system that if we go to PSAT eight, will eliminate our eighth grade writing, because that's a paper and pencil multiple choice test, and it's never been aligned with our standards. The other, PSAT ten and SAT have been. So we could end up with problems with writing. We certainly are facing a situation without the performance task where understanding of content and the ability to show you can do it is a little limited. Higher order thinking is a problem. And recently, I was given a piece of paper that was apparently the required third-party study of alignment for PSAT eight that was done in 2015, and it shows a 52% alignment to our state standards, which is not adequate. I can't tell you if it's absolutely correct, but the points that are made in that paper are exactly what I'm seeing as someone who's had that eight-year experience on the governing board and someone who's been a board member for 16 years. So the other problem is that that third-party study was not supported by, we did something different this time around. We already had a contract with College Board. So instead of running the assessment through the Department of Management, or sorry, Technology Management and Budget, DTMB, we just did a contract extension. The reason that that's so important is the way that we migrated from ACT to SAT was because DTMB did another peer study that showed that there was better alignment for SAT and that the costs were more reasonable for what we wanted to deliver. So I recognize how we got here, and there's no blame. It's just, you know, the fury of trying to do ESA being that first wave, which I didn't initially support, but did. And then seeing how things work out and what the distribution of the system is after we were cut back on the testing time means that we have a very different system going into this ESA review than we should have, from my perspective. And I would ask the department at this point, there's very little time. I understand the turmoil that it would create in the field. But we have a vendor situation. We contracted without transparency. We have a report in hand that indicates that there's not a good alignment. I can't tell you how accurate it is, I'm not a judge of that. But it's an indicator to me that we're in a very difficult situation as we go into, with this testing system, next spring, summer, having, having the feds come in and take a look and say, here were our requirements, here's what you ended up doing, this doesn't match. And I would strongly urge the board and the department to look at turning this situation over to DTMB, having them do a second, third study alignment to see whether PSAT or M-Step is the right test for the future. But this year, continuing with M-Step, so we at least don't lose the longitudinal data. If it turns out that PISA or M-Step or PSAT or something else that I don't know about is a better assessment, then I think we should know that as a state. This isn't just about educators, and it's not just about children. It's about a system, and it's about how things work. But we have, the board has a responsibility to supervise and to step back and take a look at this. And this rare opportunity for a little bit of middle site And this rare opportunity for a little bit of middle site is an important thing because the consequences of not doing it would be significant. So.
Thank you, Eileen. We certainly are not prepared to respond to the concerns, the issues that you raised this afternoon. I will consult with Vanessa, the assessment team, and get responses to the concerns that you have raised. So, thank you. Okay, Dr. Z?
Yeah, I certainly support Eileen's concerns, and thank you Pam for asking the question that I was thinking of asking earlier. But I wanted to ask, and now some of these tests, like the PSAT, originally are intended to be predictive. And I wanted to ask, to what extent are the other tests that we have predictive? I suppose if you, and I'm just curious if we have any kind of correlation, if, you know, students who are proficient in third grade, do they continue to, 99% of them continue to be proficient all the way up the line? Or is there variation? As I look at the chart on page three, and I look at the class of 2015, which was grade three in 2015, if you go diagonally, you see they went down, and then they went up. They went down, because they were fourth graders, and their fourth grade composite was down, and then their fifth grade composite was up, and then their sixth grade composite was way down by 10 points. So I can't say that anything's predictive about their scores there. And I'm just curious, is there any insight into the?
I have a couple of things to share, and Andy might as well. One is the, when we talk about proficiency, it's not a predictive question. It's a question of, there's this much content that you are expected to know in third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade, and did you learn, can you demonstrate mastery of enough of it to be proficient? You're getting into a cohort analysis question. So there's a number of reasons why a cohort of kids might, a chunk of them might be proficient in third grade, and then less or more in fourth grade, some of which has to do with their learning trajectory. Some might do, you often see, Sheila's talked about this a lot, you see cohort effects in schools where fourth grade is a tough grade for kids because the teaching staff or because that's the year that the transition happens, or there's. So the point is, the proficiency cut is not per se predictive. It's about how much content you learned. We do look at, it's also meant though, so I'm going to kind of add to what I said, it's also meant though to signal you're on track to that eventual college and career readiness. So it kind of has to do double duty. Did you learn enough content? And are we kind of on a trajectory where, when you get to 11th grade, we have a reasonable belief that you have enough to proceed on to your career or college choice? So you kind of a cohort question and a proficiency question. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that?
I guess these, part of the assumption or the question is, to what extent are the fourth grade proficiencies a part of the seventh grade proficiencies? If you don't have the fourth grade proficiencies, is there any hope of mastering the seventh grade proficiencies? It seems to me that, in that respect, it might not be, the fourth grade proficient might not be sufficient for seventh grade proficiency, but at least they're necessary. And to that extent, they're predictive of.
I think that's a little bit different. So the Mstep is a criterion reference test where it's supposed to measure what you mastered on that grade levels experience. It's not a norms-based test where you might be ranking yourself among other students and trying to increase your percentile ranking of success. The hard part in your example of going between fourth grade and seventh grade as the example is that you don't know what experiences that student's going to have in those years in between. You don't know if the content standards are going to change. You don't know what types of teachers they're going to have. You don't know, you know, what their overall education experience is going to be because that seventh grade test isn't an advanced version of the fourth grade test, per se. It's a seventh grade test on the seventh grade standards that are tested. And yes, our content standards do compound on each other, and you use things you learned in the past, but it's a little bit different than just saying, you know, if you are successful, if you're advanced in fourth grade, you have an 89% chance of being advanced in seventh grade. Certainly, you probably have a good chance, but it's not as correlated as we might want it to be in this type of an assessment.
And like Andy said, it's really a standard, it's a standards question, not as much of a test question. The standards are sequential, they are aligned, they build on each other, they're more integrated, I mean, they're integrated. So to your point, if you don't learn your fourth grade content standards well, will seventh grade probably be hard? Probably. But it's not purely a measurement question, it's really about how the standards are built.
Okay.
Thank you. Nikki?
I think that discussion kind of piggybacks onto even Cassandra's and the concept of item release. I'm just thinking from a student's perspective, which I don't know that we've really discussed fully yet. I know we've talked about how this piece of information, test scores, would inform instruction. But if you look at it from a student's standpoint, and they have access to their results and understanding, a more thorough understanding of what they're missing, maybe it's almost a hopeless and helpless situation for them to not have access to that because then they don't know what to do next. They don't know, and then they're at the peril of a test score that they don't understand, and they just kind of sit there. They sit in that realm. We don't really know the students that are willing and capable or able to grow, and they don't have a path or access to that. They're just at the peril of growth associated with how fast we can disseminate the information and get it to districts that are going to use it effectively. And that's not really helpful from a student's perspective. So my concern is, what do you do about that?
Well, I, of the many reasons we all wish Brian were here, I wish he were here because going back to the assessment vision that he launched in 2015, that was really why his heart was in the benchmark assessment, the interim assessment. Those assessments are really, when you think about an assessment system, summative assessments are not truly meant to give that immediate feedback and the individual student goal setting that you can do from a benchmark assessment. And that's why it was so important to Brian, and why now, several years later, we're not maybe exactly where we wanted to be, but we have made a state investment into benchmark assessments because those give you, not only one time a year, three times, shorter dipstick, and it gives that more, that more detailed feedback. And if you remember, his goal was that every student would work with their teachers to do just what you're saying. How did I do? What's my goal setting? What are my strengths and weaknesses? How do I use this data at a student level? And that's really in the assessment system. That's where the interims, the benchmarks are better, they're built for that purpose, and we're excited about expanding them. So to Sheila's point, we can continue to look at what Mstep can do along with that, but it's a both and. It's bringing along the benchmarks so they have that data and continuing to enhance our Mstep reporting so that we can help with those conversations.
So if I may interject for a moment, it really is looking at an assessment system that would include a summative assessment, a benchmark assessment, and then ongoing classroom assessment. So you have a triangulation of data that, as a classroom teacher, I am using to help inform instruction, but my students are also using the results of those assessments to inform where their learning gaps are as well.
There's a lot of insight that students can gather about themselves.
Absolutely, and the benchmark assessments, not only can they be administered three times a year to show growth, but there's also additional short versions of the assessments that can be administered in between those two or three times a year that can all be, they can be administered almost monthly that are short assessments that say, "You're on track for showing growth." Or, "Here are the skills that I taught, the standards that I taught. I want to assess those standards to see if the students learned them." I can administer a short assessment to a small group of students for whom I just taught those standards to see if they are able to apply them. And then the students get the immediate results.
Isn't that what all teachers do? And why do we need the state to do that?
It's a tool that teachers can use.
No, but the problem is it ends up being used on a scorecard because everything ends up being used what it's not supposed to be used for.
Well, we don't collect, we don't collect the data on the benchmark assessment.
What Sheila was just talking about was formative assessment.
I'm talking about formative assessment.
But eventually they will be if they're out there and the state's doing it. Mark my word.
Michelle?
Yeah, I want to say that I support the goal of reducing testing. And I agree that a lot of the assessments that should be done should be done by teachers that we trust, that have relationships with the students, that they can complete something and decide whether they get a passing grade or not. So the questions that I had were, if the assessments are changing in some of these grades, how are we measuring growth? Also, I also am curious to know how much money is spent by the state or the districts, not so much on the amount of, I mean, the amount of time that you all have spent, which is a tremendous amount of work. But I mean, just the administration of paying for PSATs for the whole, you know, either the district or whoever. And I know a lot of districts, they use, they pay for other assessments as well. And I think it eats into instruction time trying to prove that they are actually learning something, but they're not being given, but the amount of time that they actually have on instruction is reduced by trying to prove that they're learning something. So I guess my questions are, how do you measure growth? And how, given the changes? And how, and just how much does it cost a ballpark figure in one year to, just for the test itself and for the, you know, the grading of the tests?
So student growth is measured, we use something called a student growth percentile. That would be another post-lunch presentation someday, if you guys really want to dig into it. But essentially, it's a way that allows you to talk about growth, even if the assessments aren't exactly the same. So it has to do with where, how the student performed the year before and how they performed the year after relative where they started. Again, it's a much more technical explanation than that, but it is assessment independent, so it doesn't require that the assessments be exactly the same to help us understand progress. I know it's hard to believe, but based on lots of study and how to measure growth in a changing assessment environment by researchers and psychometricians, it's our measure. So again, we'd be happy to come back and do a more thorough presentation on that one. So the short answer is student growth percentiles. Longer answer is let us know if you want us to entertain you with that one. You know, on the money, I'd like to get back to you on the exact dollar amount because it's a little bit, people love to ask this question, and there's a lot of components. I will say, there is state law that requires, we don't test beyond what we're required to by law. There's state law and state investment, and there's also a decent amount of federal investment and federal law. So these things come in together and are used. So we will get the board more detailed figures. And yes, like Andy said, it's complicated. There's pieces on test development, scoring, reporting, and years and estimates, and costs fluctuate. So we'd like to prepare a more thorough answer for the board.
Thank you. Perhaps we can include that in the upcoming board brief once you have that information. If there aren't any other questions or comments, we will move on to the next agenda item. Vanessa and Andy, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your presentation and the responses to all of our questions. The next item is, on the committee of the whole, is an update from the Office of Partnership Districts. There is a new section of state law, 1622P, which requires partnership agreements to include measurable academic outcomes and accountability measures. We'll be talking about that today, as well as an overview of the work that continues in the Benton Harbor area schools. Again, this is a monthly update for you. It does not require any board presentation. At the table, we have Kyle Durant, Luanne Shelton, Vanessa Kiesler. We have a PowerPoint presentation which is coming around now.
Okay, so. So to begin, we should have also two handouts coming around right now. And these handouts were requests that you had. So one gives you the total number of students in partnership districts, and the other gives you the list of partnership districts by the round they were identified and the area they represent. So you know, like when you see one of our PSAs, and you don't recognize the name, it'll say Detroit area or Lansing area. And so I just kind of made them as like a quick reference for you guys. Please take them, use them as you need. We're going to actually put those on the website as well as a resource tool.
Thank you. So we wanted to do a couple of things in our update today. We wanted to highlight a couple of the assessment results for our partnership districts from the first cohort, and then talk about some of the programming going on, the 18-month review, and do a Benton Harbor update. So the first thing I'll say about the Mstep results is that we would not have necessarily expected to see change this soon in the partnership agreements on the summative assessment. What we know about partnership districts is that many students are very far from proficient. So it's why looking at those growth measures are important. Students can be growing but not be all the way to proficient. Most, almost all of the districts in the cohort one in their 18-month review didn't, they didn't focus on Mstep as their 18-month outcome. That's their three-year outcome. Because again, it takes time. It's kind of the, this is the downstream measure that changes. Other things have to change upstream. That being said, we were very excited when we looked at the Mstep results and saw that there were some positive and somewhat significant improvements for some of our districts. So just to highlight a few, I want to point these out. Bridgeport Spalding had a jump of 5.3% in their fourth grade English Language Arts and a 10.7% increase in their fourth grade math. These, as you can, if you wanted to flip back to the presentation before or the annual report, you know these are huge changes on the state assessment and really should be celebrated. And Bridgeport Spalding, their partnership school is their elementary school. So where they've been focusing their programming, they've seen some results, which is really exciting. Likewise, Muskegon Heights, they had increases in almost every grade. And very specifically, they went from 0% to 5% in grade three ELA, and they had two-year increases in eight of their 14 possible grade subject combinations. And we call out the ELA percentage increase to say, first of all, they were at zero before. No student in that district was proficient in ELA. Now, 5% of students are. It needs to be 100%, but it's at least 5% more than nothing, and that is really exciting only a year out. And Muskegon Heights, one of the things they intentionally did as their partnership agreement was invested in an ELA, a reading curriculum, and focused heavily on literacy PK 12, knowing that a lot of their older students as well don't have literacy skills that they need to be successful. So again, you see some intentionality, some focus, some support from the state, and you see some early indicators that it's going in the right direction. And then River Rouge has a two-year increase of 13.5% in their fifth grade ELA and a 9.6% increase in their fifth grade math. And again, Rouge, River Rouge, and Visker is their elementary school. They've put in place work in these content areas, and we've seen, again, these are huge increases. 13.5, 9.6, just really impressive. So kudos to those districts. There were other, you know, there were other improvements, there were pieces, but we wanted to really call those out. Kalamazoo had increases in math, grades six and seven, six, seven, and eight, between about 4%, 3.8%, 5.2%, 2.8%. And DPSCD had increases in math in grades six and eight, and in ELA, grades four and six. And East Point had some increases in math in grades five and six. If you do want to say, let me make sure this is next here. So we are highlighting very much so the successes in these grades and subjects. Again, every partnership district had an increase in some grade and subject. So we looked at that, we're excited. Most heads, everybody had some stagnations and some dips too. So that's important information for us to go back to the partnership districts and sit down and say, "Wow, amazing work, and also what's going on in sixth grade? What's going on in here? Your programming in your middle school, we don't, you know, we didn't see the dips." Or you're, I was looking at one, "Your elementary school's increasing, but your middle school seems like it's dropping off the radar. So maybe you've shifted so much focus to your elementary school that maybe some needs to come back here." Those kind of conversations. The Mstep scores aren't the whole story, and again, we should not hesitate to celebrate these increases. I would, while I take all your points about not, you know, maybe buying a celebration cake for 0.3%.
0.3 and 10.
I hear you. I would suggest the celebration cake for 5%, 10%, 13%, some of these increases we see here, and knowing just how far these schools and districts had to go. And it has been a short, it's really been a year of programming.
Now, how many of these, were any of these in third grade ELA?
Yes. So, I don't have my chart that I want. But specifically, Muskegon Heights, one of their increases was in third grade ELA. River Rouge's was in fifth, so again, it's, their big one was in fifth. We can get you a little bit more analysis on that.
And if you could just send us what you just told us, that would be great.
Yep, we will do that. So again, we're very excited. We want to be realistic too, and couple the celebration with the tough conversations about where they need to go. And I think it was good to get the Mstep results right now. But really, these schools started programming officially. They were about nine months in of program implementation under the partnership model when we tested. It's just really impressive. So hats off to the partnership districts, hats off to Brian, hats off to the team here for working in this way. And this is a kind of increase we haven't really seen with our low-performing schools in a while. So I'm very excited about it. We are all excited, I should say, but I'm personally excited. Luanne?
Okay, so that being said, the one thing that we did want to assure you, and you guys have asked several times, you know, like, "Well, how are they doing? You know, where are they right now?" And that has always been kind of a difficult question to answer because, one, our last two cohorts just started, and the first one's only been up a year, and we just kind of feel it's unfair to try to judge that because we do have a formal process for doing that, and that's the 18-month. But I did want to assure you, just with this slide, that we are there. We are constantly, you know, collaborating with them, the ISD, the authorizer, depending on the configuration of the district. So there are weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, and/or quarterly meetings scheduled with every partnership district liaison and partners. It just varies from agreement to agreement, what that looks like. There are regular, I'm sorry, there are collaborative discussions that always go on. So we have an open line of communication between this office, our ISDs, our partners in the ISDs, authorizers, et cetera. authorizers, et cetera. And we continue to provide, and our ISDs as well, technical assistance and training. So we are constantly monitoring and, and working up to this first 18-month that, that's coming up.
Can I just inject real quick?
Yes, yes, yes.
I think I've been the one saying, you know, don't surprise us in three years, but I understand you're saying there's a process and I can't, we can't say definitively, but is there a sense that, you know, the culture, you know, there's positive, you know, I mean, there's, are people like, you know, sulking and, you know, does it seem like, I mean, are they, is there at least something that says we're really rallying or, you know, we're moving in the, and I don't just mean feel-good, but that is a sense of feeling that things are getting better. You know, I think that you could probably judge that or at least get it from the folks that are in this, I mean, maybe just from them for one degree.
Well, you actually have a document in front of you from earlier today. If you look in the annual review, there are actually testimonials from those partnership districts as far as that, that climate and culture feel of, that, you know, that this has been a very positive move for them and, you know, they've focused their resources. Again, Tom, just to assure you, we are not going to wait to 36 months to surprise you. The 18-month process review is going to be very comprehensive, and you will get a very thorough report out of where everybody stands because there, there are for some, written in their own agreements, consequences if they don't meet it significantly. So it will not, you, we won't get to the end of the three years and it's all of a sudden like, oh my God, guess what? No, no, we will know all along.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to reiterate what I said a minute ago. Oh, sorry, I'm now so excited, I want to say it again. That you ask, is there a positive sense? Yes, I mean, across the nine, the eight now with Benton Harbor in their own, but they have, Kyle will report on them. A lot of anecd, not even anecdotal, a lot of reporting back from superintendents, from teachers, from the ISDs, that things are changing, kind of the process pieces are coming in place. And then again, to me, and I think to the districts, seeing the, the M-Step results were just a really surprising validation, maybe I, we didn't necessarily expect to see it change there. So I think that'll energize, but it also allows us to say, hey, we would have expected to see, you know, if so-and-so was able to get gains in, da-da-da, you didn't get as many gains, let's talk, let's have a non-conversation about why. I mean, it could be a lot of things. It could be you had to retrain staff. There's a lot of explanations, but, but there is generally an energy, people are serious about this, people are excited about it, and especially the first cohort, all of them. But the first cohort know that the success or failure of this model really depends on them.
Thank you.
Okay. Pam?
So, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, carry on, I can, I can wait, I can wait.
All right, Luanne?
Okay, so the new legislation, 388.1622P, which we just called 22P, you'll hearsay because we don't want to say that every single time, went into, will be going into effect October 1. And so the one thing that we had to do this, at this last part of the summer, now until actually a technical assistance that we actually have scheduled for Thursday, is to, one, analyze all of the partnership district agreements to see if they met the three, I say three requirements, there are really two requirements, but I say three because I think of 18, 18-month, 36-month, and next level of accountability, I think of them kind of separately. And so we went through a pretty extensive process here led by Dan Ledoux in various aspects across, across offices and across divisions to look at what was in each agreement and if it met what we interpreted and put in place to the business rules around this law. And so what the law basically says, and I didn't put it in front of you and give it to you, and I'm happy to if that's something that you want, is that all partnership district agreements have to show, have to have academic achievement with proficiency grade level indicated in, as one of their goals. They have to have student growth benchmark assessments as one of their goals, and they have to have next level of accountability of reconstitution or closure. Of that, we had 14 of our agreements that met that. They were written that way, they met, they met all of that.
I'm sorry, repeat the third one?
Yeah, what was the third?
The next level of accountability, next, so next level of accountability, if you don't make, if you don't make your.
So you don't hit these benchmarks, we're going to close you down.
Or, yes, or reconstitute.
Which is basically the same thing.
Haven't we been down this road before?
Right, because it works so well.
Yeah.
Like, like Luanne said, when we, when we launched the partnership model, they, they had more flexibility in the type of next levels of accountability they would choose, the department pursued of, of variety of options. When this law passed during the budget process last year, it said, it's not a huge change from where we are, but the biggest change is saying one of the next levels of accountability needs to be either closure or reconstitution and defined reconstitution.
That's a huge change.
Yes.
Can I ask?
Yes, you may.
My understanding is that it's up to MDE to determine whether they've made that progress or not, correct?
For the reviews at 18 months and 36 months?
Well, in terms of whether they're making progress or not.
That's our understanding.
Right.
Which is that eight, that is going to be that 18 months. In the 36 months, and that is actually, you know, the, it's, it's the next slide, is what we're working on to make sure that it's very collaborative and we get to a good place on.
So it's still based on what they came up with, right?
Yes.
And, I mean, test scores are not in everyone.
No, and many of them, if not nearly all of them, did not put M-Step for 18-month. They, I mean.
Right, I didn't think so, I was just.
No, they didn't.
So like Luanne said, was starting to say, a number of our, we, while it is a large change, it is not as large of a change as it could be for a lot of our districts. And so we're going through an individualized technical assistance process to go back and say, you know, you need to, this is the part you need to update, this is the part you need to update, and here are some suggestions about how. For some of them, particularly around the goals, the updates are smaller. If you say, if you specify it in a more, like you have a target instead of just a general sense, that would get you closer. But for the ones who had not specified one of the next levels of accountability that are required under this law, that's where the biggest change comes. So, we agree, we know.
I guess one of, just a quick, is Detroit treated differently or held to a different standard, or are they treated the same as every other district under the, under all, not just this law?
Except the A through F.
Except the A through F?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, when it comes to this, yeah, not, they're, it applies to all.
But the A through F applies only to them?
Right. So, in determining and progress monitoring and this 18-month piece that's going to be coming up and 36-month, we do have to look at what the law says as far as them making their target or not making their target for growth and achievement. But we also have to consider what's in the legal agreement, and in that legal agreement, many of them put process goals as well, like getting a curriculum audit or instituting a new curriculum, or installing the blueprint, or building a plan around educator effectiveness, et cetera. So I say all that to say that it's not just those two pieces that will be looked at, the entire agreement will be looked at as a whole.
And that was in the budget?
Yes.
So that's just a one-year requirement?
Not policy.
The budget bills open up every year.
Right.
They would have to do that again next year.
Every year.
No, no, you're right. No, no, no.
Okay.
Are we good?
Policy, it's only one year in the budget. Okay.
Okay, so, the 18-month goal, goals review process, which we are calling the RGA process, which is review of goal attainment. We are in the process now of working with Andy Mittelstadt, Chris Janster's office, our office, and it'll probably include OES, Paula Daniels' office, because we do a lot of cross-planning, a lot of cross-developing and collaborating when it comes to these issues. And so in this process, we hope to have it all in place by the end of October. We will be seeking district input. We will be seeking ISD and/or authorizer input, looking at goals very individually, met, not met, you know, evidence being uploaded to our GEMS, MARS, et cetera. Coming together, a day-to-review in a very structured review process with a facilitator, discussing the evidence that's been uploaded, looking at the business rules that were applied to determining. So when I say that, we are going to, we are going to be looking at, if someone put down that they were going to make 3% growth, and they made 2.9% growth, we're not going to haggle with that. We're going to have business rules that's going to just kick it up and say, yes, that's met. We're rounding up for the sake of this 18-month. So that's what I, that's what I'm talking about. So that'll be a part of the collaborative process, and then what the next steps are. Because some may choose, much like Benton Harbor did, they may choose to implement some of their own next level of accountability pieces that they have put in place. And I do have to say honestly, very quickly, with the law, it does define reconstitution. Reconstitution is replacement of 25% of staff, which is much different from our previous laws of, you know.
And the leadership too, correct?
Yeah, mhm, but, but it was 50% in the past. So, so that's what that looks like for the 18-month.
And let's just be clear here, 22P requires, a previous slide should not have said I have to have an M-Step goal, we don't have to have an M-Step goal. They have to have measurable academic outcomes at both 18 and 36 months. That is different. An 18-month goal could be a growth measure, it could, but it has to be measurable. It has to say, so it can't be only process goals or only percent of teachers trained. So like you said here, 14 of 34 districts are already good. The other 20 are working on it. So I think the way, I think that previous slide misled us a little, made us a little more scared.
Sorry.
It doesn't have to be M-Step.
Sorry.
And again, Brian was clear, we were clear with those first nine, that they had to have a growth goal.
Right.
They should have a growth goal, the NWA or local district or whatever. We did not expect an M-Step goal, so don't, let me take your temperature down there a little bit, because I'm like, measurable academic outcomes.
Sorry, that's my fault. I was, I was just trying to differentiate, like with just language that, you know, when we talked about benchmark, aside from, you know, academic goal, it could be various things, and that's where the M-Step would fall. So I didn't mean to just put that as, I should have put examples. Okay, so finishing up with 22P, again, 14 of the 34 districts, they're, they met all the requirements. 20 of them we are working with, and honestly, I could almost probably cut that number in half when we talk about very minor, they may have said simply on their 18-month growth goal that their, their students were going to hit, so many of their students were going to hit the 50 percentile, which it needs to either say proficiency or grade level. It was literally adding a word of, what do you mean? I mean, 50 percentile doesn't mean that it's at grade level or it's toward proficiency. So they were very minor changes. The last piece, 21H. So again, you'll always hear me talk about 22P and 21H and more about 21H, and that's our funding. I don't have a report out on it yet because we just got those monies out last year. We are going to be looking at the effectiveness of how the money was used, who used it for what, et cetera, et cetera, and just evaluating that use of the money and monitoring the use of that money. But it was available again this year with $7 million, so $1 million more than the $6 million that we have every year. And we just opened up the window for our cohort, I don't want to say cohort, this round three, because they're, they're actually, you know, kind of just one thing. This round three to apply, and the only reason we did that is because round one and round two have already applied and received funds, and we wanted this new and last round to have the opportunity to apply. But then it really is opened up to everyone to apply, so, you know, the funds are not there or used up and et cetera. We did do something very cool this year, and what we're moving toward in this office is really automate things, so it's not a paper application, you probably didn't know that before, but now it's in GEMS and it's very easy for districts to go in and work with their liaisons and, you know, say this is what they would like, and this is a justification, and we can go in and read it and approve and then get the monies out to them. So we do anticipate that the first round will complete their submissions in the next few days, and we will have fundings, funding in their hands by, I think it's like October 20th that, that the state payments are, go out.
Kyle?
Just a quick update on, on our work in Benton Harbor. I've had the opportunity to be in the district three times over the past eight weeks and have monthly meetings scheduled with both the board and the CEO throughout the school year. There's no shortage of work to do, and Dr. and his team are kind of diving right into doing that. One of his first main goals initially, which was outlined in the cooperative agreement, was to develop a district-wide strategic plan. We've been supporting him in that work. Dr. Shelton was actually in the district over the weekend, working with him on helping to develop some of the measurable, measurable goals and get a framework for how to develop that plan. Obviously, the district budget and finance is an important aspect, especially this time of the year as we look at the October Account Day. The early student enrollment numbers look stable, but we'll obviously know more once end of October rolls around and we have a better understanding of who's in the district. When I was there last Tuesday, there were, there was actually a line out the door for, for parents and families that were enrolling in the district, so that's a, you know, one positive sign. We're partnering with the Department of Treasury to provide direct business office support. They've actually been working in the district for, for three years now to help run the business office essentially. The district has hired their own CFO who started shortly before Dr. Herrera did in early July. Dr. has put in place a plan to address their large carryover balances they've had in federal programs, and this is an issue we've seen in other partnership districts as well, is districts have resources that are allocated to them and they, you know, for a multitude of reasons, haven't been able to effectively utilize them in the, in the year that it was given to them. So those are essentially dollars and, that translates into program and services left on the table any given year, and he has a plan to address that and has budgeted for all those carryover balances in the current year. He's had an opportunity to review the instructional administration staffing to maximize the capacity within the district and ensure district staff with the, I think their skillsets are in the right places. The districts had four different superintendents and four different CFOs over the last five years. So that type of turnover and chaos leads to a lot of band-aid approaches in many areas, including staffing of the district. And one example around special education is that they had teachers that were certified special ed teachers who weren't in the classroom, they were doing other work in the, in the district, and some of the challenges that the district faces in special education services. Obviously, those, those teachers are needed in the instructional space, so they've been moved. One of the important, one of the, I think, cool and more important changes that have happened in the last six months or six weeks has been the district has entered into a collaborative agreement with Western Michigan University, both of their colleges of education and human development, to provide support for the district in a broad range of, of services ranging from teacher prep to social, emotional, behavioral support services and CTE programming. So they are working out kind of the tasks within each of those areas right now in terms of what the actual work will look like, but the district will be able to leverage resources, both kind of human capital-wise and fiscal, fiscally from a university to help improve educational offerings to students in the district.
And that concludes our update.
Jill? Okay, thank you Vanessa, Luanne, and Kyle. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'll just say that I appreciate the, the thorough presentation and the information, actually, that's given in the annual report. I, Tom, I definitely join you, so you're not the only one that, you know, does not want any surprises, and being in these districts, wanting to make sure that it's very clear to them and to us what is going on and what they need to be doing, because, you know, there, those that are coming up on the 18-month and 36-month, that's, we just want to make sure we get it right. So this information that you gave us in this annual report is, is very helpful. And so as we talked about, during the previous conversation, we made inference and, and gave credit to, to some markers, to a marker being moved. When we address these outliers, that's going to make huge impacts on those numbers, so, you know, just keeping, keeping that in, in mind.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation and responses to questions. Okay, moving to the regular meeting, we have the approval of the State Board of Education minutes. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and Committee of the Whole meeting of August 14th, 2018?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Four.
Discussion?
I have three changes. Oh, I'm sorry.
No? Oh, I'm sorry, Cassandra.
Three quick changes on page 10, the last paragraph. No, I'm sorry, page 11, the second paragraph, it says, "I participated in the Detroit Urban Summit," participated in should be changed to attended. Then, page 10, it says, "Dr. Albridge asked if student choice students to forego instruction." I think that's supposed to read, "asked if student choice students are allowed to forego or can forego?" It doesn't read correct. And then the last one is on page 13. I believe we're missing under the third paragraph, "Dr. Albridge," I think it's supposed to say, "said the draft state superintendent job description," it's missing a word.
Okay. We will make those changes. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the reports of the co-presidents.
I will forego.
I had three items. First off, I wanted to acknowledge not only 9/11, but in many schools and places, Michiganders are observing Patriot Week, which begins with the 9/11 and ends with the anniversary of our Constitution of 9/17. It is well to remember these important things, our values that we hold in common as Americans, and 9/11 grimly shows that we will, as Benjamin Franklin said, either hang together or we will assuredly hang separately. Secondly, last month, I was nominated for the third time to the State Board of Education, and I deeply appreciate those who supported my renomination. The state Republicans also nominated Tammy Carlon of Novi, and God and the people willing, I hope to be able to serve with her in the new term. I also note that Michigan Democrats nominated Judy Pritchard, who has been a frequent visitor here with us. I had a class under her about 15 or 20 years ago in McComb ISD, and have admired her character and her professionalism ever since. I think she's an excellent selection. And the third thing I wanted to mention is I was honored to make a visit with Assistant Secretary of Education Frank Rogan, sometime teacher, principal, Florida Lieutenant Governor, and now Assistant Secretary of Education to the Clinton Dale Schools, where we were hosted by CEO Greg Green, and given a demonstration of their flipped or reverse classroom procedure, which they credit with remaking their entire school culture and lifting them from the dregs of the state scores to much more respectable progress. So we want to thank both Assistant Secretary Rogan for visiting Michigan, honoring us with a visit, and CEO Green for sharing their wonderful accomplishments at Clinton Dale Schools.
Can I just add?
Yes, of course.
Since we mentioned candidates, I don't want to forget Tiffany Tilly was also nominated by the Democratic Party, and Sherri Wells is here, who runs, is running on the Green Party ticket.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move to the report from the interim state superintendent. I'm just going to briefly highlight three items today. During the August 14 State Board of Education meeting, I indicated that I would contact the Attorney General's Office for some guidance on how to proceed following the board's four-to-four vote on the statutory criteria for the competitive grants that are part of the Marshall Plan for Talent. I did receive written divisional-level advice, which I did share with all of the State Board of Education members. The advice requires MDE to carry out our statutory responsibilities, which we have begun since receiving this information. Also, during the same board meeting, board members requested that we provide a guidance document for the grant application competition. We used the feedback that we received from the board on August 14 to draft a guidance document, which we sent to the board for your feedback, your suggestions, your input. We have not received anything as of today, so we would like to extend the courtesy to you to please send us your feedback by Friday, September 21st. So if you have feedback you'd like to provide to us, please send it to Wendy Larvik by Friday, September 21. If you need me to, I would be glad to resend that guidance document to you electronically, so you will have it readily available. I'd also like to comment that we had an error in the pupil accounting manual related to enrolling students in cyber schools, which we cleared up as soon as that error was brought to our attention. Section 553A requires cyber schools to provide 1098 hours to students, and that students have to participate in 1098 hours in order for the cyber school to receive state aid for that student. The pupil accounting manual has been updated to reflect the language change and provide clarification. We've sent a communication to the field with the language change, as well as a link to the pupil accounting manual, where that change has been posted along with some additional clarifying information. And then, yes, Dr. Z.
Pardon me. But now, was the, was the accounting done in this erroneous manner last year?
No, it was done this past year. For this year's pupil accounting manual that was issued August, just last month, August 1.
So did that represent a change in accounting from last year as opposed to what's going to be applied this year?
What was reported was a change in how it was student, pupil membership was going to be counted, but it was in error. So the information presented said that students had to participate for 1098 in order to receive state aid, and that students could not enroll unless they were going to participate for 1098 hours of instruction. And we remedied that and said that state aid will be allocated for students who participate for 1098 hours, but a student can register and enroll in a cyber school at any time.
Okay. And was the policy implemented last year different from what's being implemented this year?
It will not be, no.
Okay. That's what I wanted to.
Policy will be the same from 1718 to 1819.
Okay. Okay.
It was simply an interpretation of language that was in the pupil accounting manual that was incorrect, that was corrected once we found out about it.
Okay. Thank you.
And then my last item is a really exciting item for me, because from September 23 to the 30th, I am going to be in Taiwan to sign the Memorandum of Understanding for the Teacher Exchange Program. This is an exchange program that brings language teachers to the United States, to Michigan, and Michigan teachers to Taiwan. So very excited, because this is my first time to Asia. So I'm very excited about it, and I look forward to sharing my trip with you during the October State Board of Ed meeting. And that concludes my report. We'll move on now to the report of the Teacher of the Year. And we welcome Laura Chang, our 2018-19 Michigan Teacher of the Year. Laura is a K-5 reading and math interventionist at the Vicksburg Community Schools. And I believe, Laura, you have some, a report that you are going to be sharing with us this afternoon.
Yes. And with your permission, I'd like to invite Gina down to the table to join me. So I'd like to illustrate today what competency-based personalized instruction should look like in an elementary classroom. It shouldn't be rows of students staring at a computer, but students engaged in work specific to their individualized needs. So this question was commonly heard in my early years of teaching. Students were lined up in rows in the classroom, 18, 20 years ago. Teachers would deliver the content from the front of the room while the students listened quietly at their desks. After the content was delivered, the teacher would pass out the worksheet around the room, and by the time she got to the last student, the first student had raised her hand because she'd finished, and she said, "I'm done. What do I do next?" Today, the effective elementary classroom should be much more vibrant and active. Walking into the classroom, a visitor might see a group of students huddled around a teacher in one corner. In another corner, a group of students are around a computer, working collaboratively. There might be students reading independently and taking notes. There might be students engaged in partner activities. It's loud. It looks chaotic walking in from the outside. However, all students are actively taking charge of their learning, and they're finding ways to exhibit their new knowledge in real-life ways to their classmates and their families. Kids in these classrooms are excited to learn. They're excited to show what they know, and they're able to use technology to collaborate with their peers to practice their problem-solving skills together. So the first step in creating this personalized differentiated classroom environment is working with colleagues to identify priority standards. At the second grade level, there are more than 40 Michigan standards in English Language Arts and over 25 standards in mathematics. The vast majority of those 65 standards also have specific sub-standards as well. Also, elementary teachers need to balance their day with the demands of science and social studies, and handwriting, and social skills, and PE, and the arts, all of those wonderful things that we squeeze in. There's just not enough time in a school year to teach every standard to mastery. So we've worked in Vicksburg, in my district, to collaborate with grade-level teams, as you see here, to identify priority standards. This, I want to be really clear, this doesn't mean that we don't teach every standard as prescribed by the state. That's not it at all. Instead, we carefully identify the overall goal of the content that will prove students have mastery. So by identifying these priority standards, we can provide opportunities for students to dig deeper into fewer standards, rather than just quickly cover at a surface level a wide variety of standards. Every student, every student has academic strengths. One student might read stories with fluency and expression, but may not comprehend the text. Another student might be able to solve two- and three-digit addition problems, but they might not understand the difference between 2D and 3D shapes. So before beginning work around a new priority standard in the classroom, the teacher needs to assess students' knowledge of that standard to determine which student needs which instruction. There is no one-size-fits-all approach in the classroom. If a student has already mastered the content, they've got to be given opportunities to work on content that they have not yet mastered. Equity is not everyone getting the same thing in your classroom. It's allowing students to move on to something new when they're ready, and it's revisiting content with students who need additional support. Equity is giving every student a fair chance of success. Differentiated instructional groups are then developed based on that data. For example, the teacher might identify a small group of students who struggle in reading comprehension and need additional supports to master the grade-level content. She meets in a guided reading group with these students daily to scaffold their learning and provide guided practice with grade-level text. Around the room, as you can see here, groups of students are also developing reading comprehension skills by digging deeper into texts that they have read independently. One group of students, that you can see in the bottom left there, that group of students is programming an Ozobot, a little, a small robot to retell a story. Other students are creating a book review on Flipgrid. I want to show you just a quick little snippet of that.
This is my favorite book. It's from Minjago. It's called "Minjago Masters the Spinja Two: The Titanium Ninja." I highly recommend this book because it is so cool, and actually, Jade Blue Ninja is in my class. Let me find my favorite paint.
So he's about to provide evidence from the text, which describes exactly why he would recommend that book to his peers. So other students are spending this time reading independently. Some students are writing a persuasive letter to their pen pal across the state, persuading them why they should read the book that they just read, providing details and examples from the text. In this way, all students are exhibiting their learning in a wide variety of ways to their teachers and classmates while not working on the same activity. Every student has a chance to work at their unique individual level while moving toward a common priority standard in reading comprehension. In an effective classroom, this does not mean that a student is working on a program on a computer. Instead, students are immersed in projects to dig deeper into the content and extend the learning beyond the confines of the grade-level curriculum. There's Brody again. Differentiated personalized learning is not just for students who are struggling with the academic content. Students who are working above grade level also benefit from this type of instruction because they are able to push ahead while teachers continue to teach and reinforce the grade-level content to the students who need it. Teachers meet with students to examine their data, set goals for learning, and track the data based on formative assessments given throughout the unit of study. When students take ownership of their own data, they're able to share their progress with classmates, teachers, and families. This is a picture here of a student-led conference. In Vicksburg, kindergarten through fifth-grade students lead one of their two parent-teacher conferences in the school year. They know their data, they can explain it to their families, and they're motivated by it. The same process continues with potentially all of the grade-level standards. At first, the thought of personalizing learning to this degree with every standard is overwhelming. And it's okay to start slowly, though, to create that environment that fosters strong, independent, engaged learners. Now, I'd like to pass the mic very briefly to Dr. Gina Pepin. She represents Region 1, which is the entire Upper Peninsula, and she's going to take just a few minutes to share a few points specific to her region.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me a few minutes to just share with you kind of my plan, my action plan for Upper Peninsula. As it was noted earlier, that we really need to retain and recruit and get some diversity up in the UP. We had some struggle with filling some positions, even this current school year. And I think there are so many amazing teachers up there right now, that if we can just get people to celebrate and recognize and create some networking systems and some different things up there, that we can get them more involved at this level as well. And so that's a big part of my action plan, and I'll just. So just really want to focus on elevating and celebrating the educators that are there right now, and getting them to connect with one another across a pretty large region, working on outreach and networking nominations and different type of recognition for these folks. I had just previously shared this weekend the nomination for the Michigan Teacher of the Year link, and just saying that anyone can nominate a teacher from the, you know, Upper Peninsula parents. And I already had gotten seven emails and texts within, that was two evenings ago. So that, to me, is really exciting to just be able to build that capacity up there. I think just working on identifying what those barriers are and what our needs are, so that we can change perceptions, or at least clarify some things, where I know a lot of teachers have said to me, "Oh, my goodness, but it's so far away to come to Lansing and have to participate in these things." And in all reality, because of everyone here and MDE, I flew in last night after I taught. So, and I can fly out tomorrow at 5:30 a.m. and walk right onto my school by 10 a.m. So it's doable. So being able to share, you know, the structural pieces that, we can do this, and we can make this work. So I'm hoping to recruit and be a big part of that as well. Again, some local incentives. Someone had shared with us last year, when Laura and I were both some of the remaining members for the Teacher Advisory Council, how in Detroit, there was an incentive for 50% off mortgages. I'm going to be visiting a lot of people in the UP, I think, throughout this year to see what we can build for those local incentives as well, because there's a great, there's a great advantage to being in a small community. And I know that some of these businesses and these local stakeholders have the power to do things like that. So that's part of my plan as well. And I just wanted to share with you really quickly that we are just in like this almost second week of the Leader and Me. We are one of, we are the first UP school to actually start incorporating this, and I can already see a cultural change. And I know Laura's school had, what year are you guys in?
Year three.
Year three. I would be ecstatic to have this up here, and I think it's really going to do just some promising things. And it's also going to, I think, provide to teachers, who we all know directly impact those students, just some... impact those students, just some additional resources, because as a third-grade law and all those other things right here, we've, we focused on, we focused this year more on behavioralists in our schools, rather than reading specialists. And we need to be able to provide supports for all of our diverse students up there as well. So, I just wanted to kind of share that with you. And I know Northern Michigan University is working on some creative ways on getting some of those career pathways established, and grants, and different applications, even free courses, to help build more teacher capacity up there as well. So, thank you for allowing me to share that. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina, and thank you, Laura. Appreciate your report this month. Okay, the first item of today's discussion-action agenda is the discussion on State Superintendent search, and I believe our co-presidents, Richard Zilei and Cassandra Ulrich, will lead this discussion.
So, I am passing around three documents. One is just a reminder of our timeline, and I am happy to report we continue to be following the timeline, so we are right on schedule. The second thing that I am passing around, there are two documents, they're the same thing. One is a red line with the superintendent job description, and the other is the clean copy of the job description, assuming all of the changes have been accepted. As you know, we put this out for public comment last month. We received two comments back, and as a result of that, we made a few changes to the job description. And in addition, we also made a couple of adjustments, one being moving the Michigan Constitution language up to the beginning, since that really doesn't fall under roles and responsibilities, but is more a general description. And then, the other thing that we changed is we removed the priority ordering from all of the credentials, skills, traits, and experience, as, I don't think, this was a holdover from the last, and we, as a board, didn't discuss prioritization in this manner. So, I figured we could just remove it, and then it wouldn't be necessarily an issue for us. And Richard, I think you had one change as well, correct?
It's simply, um, knowledge of technology, I, you know, it was like extreme knowledge of technology, and I just thought that was not...
Okay. So, with that, we're submitting this for discussion, and hopefully approval this month, but if not, we still have time for next month as well. In addition, I will just say that Deputy Superintendent Grant met with the DTMB a couple weeks ago, and we believe that the RFP will go out this week.
It will be posted no later than Friday of this week.
Yes. So, that, too, is on schedule.
Okay, so, we will begin by having a motion to approve Michigan State Superintendent job description. And we have a motion and a second discussion.
I guess, so, how, yes.
Yes.
How exactly would, so, when we hire the firm, they'll use this to include, I mean, they'll, they'll use it to publish, but then will they use it to include and exclude candidates?
Well, so, I can tell you what happened last time. So, candidates, they have to bring all the candidates to us. They cannot exclude the candidates.
Right, okay.
The candidates can ask for confidentiality, in which case, we can go into executive session. If a candidate does not ask for confidentiality, then we have to discuss them in open setting. But my understanding from the last time is they are not permitted to withhold candidates from us.
Okay, so, it could be 40 or 50?
Last time, it was over 50, yeah.
Okay.
But only one wanted to be in public session. All the rest of them asked for confidentiality.
You guys?
In the first round.
And y'all did 49 different?
Well, we relied on the search firm to give us recommendations from those, and I think what they did is narrowed it down to about 15, that they thought met the criteria we were seeking. And then, we discussed those 15, well, we first of all said, "Yeah, we think you're right about the other ones," and then we started doing a deeper dive into the 15.
But only one was the public name?
Correct. Yes, and so, what we did is we gavelled in to a public meeting. We said, "Does anyone have anything to discuss about this candidate?" Nobody did. We gavelled out.
Okay, so, if we don't, if somebody applies that isn't 100% in line with this, we can still choose them?
Sure. Yep, yep.
That's one of the things that I would love to see, is someone who's knowledgeable of and supportive of a whole-child approach.
That's interesting.
Is there in there?
There's always in there.
Just well-rounded education, not really, I guess, not...
I guess, when I think of a whole, a whole child, I think of that a child is healthy, safe, engaged. I think, and the reason why I think about it is because we understand more and more the connection between the health of a child and the educational outcomes, and we've learned that more here in Michigan than anyplace else.
So, under number eight, would you like to add a third bullet? Because it's Michigan-specific?
I'm wondering if it might belong under three?
I'm thinking seven.
Okay, wow.
Seven needs another bullet point.
I think, to me, it puts, it puts better under three, but I won't argue as long as it's there, but I do think that it fits under three.
Can you recommend it?
I know you were going to ask me that, and no. I was getting ready to look through here to see if there was, I thought that there was, I saw some language. I don't know. Kyle, do you have any thoughts on that? Maybe supports?
Concern for the whole child.
Or understands the importance of providing supports that meet the needs of the whole child.
Like that. I'll go with that.
Understands the importance of providing supports to meet the needs of the whole child.
The whole-child approach, or something like that.
And I'll just say, I think Richard has also said, as long as it's understood that there are concerns of mission creep when it comes to that, knowing that this is not exclusive, it won't exclude anybody, I'm fine with including that.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. We now have a job description for the State Superintendent position. Moving on to the next item on today's agenda, it's a, now, moving back to the approval of the extension of the Moratorium on Educated Preparation Institutions in Michigan. So, earlier today, we had a presentation and a discussion on this topic, so now we will move to a motion to approve the Moratorium on Education Preparation Institutions. So, if you don't mind, I will read the motion. Recommend that the State Board of Education approve the extension of the Moratorium on New Educator Preparation Institution approvals for three years, October 13, 2018, through October 13, 2021, as described in the Superintendent's memorandum dated August 28, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
Well, let's just make a motion, and then we approve it or not.
Okay.
So, for the purpose of discussion, I move.
Okay.
The recommendation.
Support. And now, discussion. Yes, Cassandra?
I would suggest we need to modify this, because we do have shortage areas in certain area, not geographic and position-wise, and if there are institutions that can satisfy some of those shortages, I think we should not limit them from being able to do that. I would also, I don't know if this is feasible or not, but I do think that we should treat alternative and traditional in a very similar manner. I don't think it's necessarily fair that we create moratoriums on some, and then we treat alternative forms differently, because that is suggesting, in my opinion, that we are believing that alternative forms are somehow superior by not having them treated similar. Those are just my two cents.
Okay, Dr. Z?
I'll make it four cents. I agree with several of your concerns, and my own, my own thought is that lifting the moratorium does not convey rights to organizations or groups that may have an interest in establishing a program. So, lifting the moratorium does not obligate the department to spend a lot of time justifying or refusing. That's what I'm saying. On the other hand, I, you know, if someone has a creative program that they want to develop, I guess we'll trust the professionals in the department to whether there's merit or refer it to the board if they feel that it's, they need a decision one way or the other. But I think that I would like to see the moratorium lifted, and without tying up the department in, but without necessarily implying rights to other, to schools or groups that may want to establish a new program that the department is not convinced has merit.
So, I, so far, I hear that there are two board members for considering removing the moratorium.
Modifying.
Modifying, so that would be having a selective moratorium?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
I guess I just, yesterday in the Detroit News, there was an article with the headline, "Michigan School District Battle Widespread Teacher Shortages," and the executive director, who we heard during public comment, of the State Superintendent's talks, I mean, I don't want to talk, maybe I'm summarizing wrong, but seems like everything, I mean, a lot of stuff, special ed, world languages, math, science, ELL, that there's a lot of shortages. And, you know, I, I don't know how selective we need to be. It sounded like it takes a while to get these things going, but I guess, and the problem would be is they could get going, and then all of a sudden, I guess they wouldn't revoke it once they're getting going. But I just, I personally just wouldn't want to see any, any withholding of competition, and who knows why somebody may choose one program over another. I mean, Waterford just hired, Waterford Schools just hired 45 teachers, and they're still short 45 after that hiring, and Farmington Hills, 25 teachers short. So, I know there's a lot, I hear it, I think there's a shortage, so I don't, I don't know that we should just, I don't know if it's going to get better by the time these schools come online, if there's a couple of them, they're going to come online, but I think we ought to withhold it. I don't know if today, we just need to give a three-month moratorium. It sounds like there's some that want to modify, some that may want to totally lift it. I think, I don't know if there's a majority that just says we don't want to extend it for three years, as is.
Okay, Pam and Eileen?
And, you know, I really don't know how we address this, but, you know, for me, I'm when, I was trying to listen intently and really pay attention to what the purpose of this was, and we talk about shortage, and we talk about shortages in some areas. I read the article that was in the newspaper yesterday, but I live every day looking at, you know, we're not talking about shortages, we're talking about the house is on fire, there are not teachers showing up, and kids are sitting in, being stored in places until someone can come in that day and provide help to that, to that school. So, you know, I don't know how that translates into altering this, or having some sort of modified moratorium, but I guess I'm really trying to follow, and it's really difficult for me to follow what it is that we're trying to do here.
Okay. Eileen?
So, we're trying to balance a bunch of different things. We've got geographic and subject area shortages, which means that, you know, we can't get teachers up into the UP. And what was the quote yesterday in the Detroit News? He's not going to let, the UP Superintendent won't let his physics teacher retire. Thank you very much. I mean, that makes sense to me. But the reality is that we're also producing more teachers in disciplines that we don't need than we're able to hire in the state. So, to me, this is a pinpointed effort to recruit, educate, and retain teachers in geographic and subject area shortages, for sure. And Vanessa talked, has talked repeatedly about trying to bring kids through middle school and high school, wanting to become teachers and understanding what it means. And that's really important. And then, the whole mentoring piece, everything that was discussed today, the educated prep, those are all bits and pieces of the puzzle. That's what we do. We supervise educated preparation in the state. It's the only aspect of post-secondary that we have control over. So, opening it up and letting it be a Wild West of competition makes less sense to me than saying, "Guys, you know, it's a different world at this point. We have to, we're seeing results from this careful educated preparation, we're seeing it with kids at risk, and we need to continue on this path. Who is not doing certain things already that we need, who can join us?" So, I would be very interested in the three-month moratorium, and any reflection you can give us on whether there are, or whether there are colleges, universities, who, for example, Hillsdale, would they be willing with their student emphasis to partner with Grand Valley, which is doing a good job of educated preparation, or another institution that we feel is on top of this and all over it? That's one possibility. Another one is, are there teacher prep programs, or institutions like Zappanport, who wanted to extend their alt route into a comprehensive program, if they're already understanding what the goals are? A subject area and geographic area, what can Northern Michigan do more? Is there some way to make this work for the areas that are really struggling? Because just to produce more L-ed teachers who are going to go out of state makes less sense to me with the, the problem is that we have this responsibility. So, you have a limited capacity. It's finite, and if we stretch you too thin, then we're not going to make the progress that we could be making with the rest of the EPIs. And I see that clearly, and I don't want to say suddenly, "Let's bring on 30 more." That's not going to solve it. The real question is who can step up to the plate? Are there institutions out there that are thinking about this and would want to do something? So, I would be in favor of a three-month moratorium extension with, if it's possible, to get more data from you folks, from staff, to say, "Here's what might be possible."
I just have a quick question. Is the alt route desirable and effective for those areas that are short of teachers?
So, that's a big question. Lea can talk more about this. Due to our law, alt routes actually cannot prepare special education teachers, and they can't prepare career tech education teachers. The alt routes will not help with those shortages. That would be strategic expansion by certain, it'd have to be a prep.
Physics, for example.
So, so, are they effect, now, the second part, are they effective in other areas? They are primarily located in urban areas, hard, you know, hard-to-staff districts. None of our programs are mature enough for us to have conclusive effectiveness or non-effectiveness data. So, we can tell you about where they are and who they're staffing, but we don't, they're all new enough that they're still in their, what we would call their preliminary program approval? Because, again, the law steps out that they get preliminary program approval, and then they have to submit a certain amount of data, and then if they meet certain criteria, they get full program approval. So, I can't answer your ultimate effectiveness question, or like, are they good overall? Are they, they are currently helping primarily with urban areas. Are they effective at that? We just don't have an answer to, no. And they can't meet some of our shortages in special ed and CTE, because we, our law does not allow that.
Okay, Michelle?
So, you know, I hear that there's more teachers produced, but there's still massive shortages in particular areas. So, I don't think the issue is the moratorium or not the moratorium. I think it's the issue is, why are teachers leaving, and why aren't they staying in the profession? And I'm not sure a moratorium or not a moratorium, and although I... And although I tend to think of more strategic way of trying to get the teachers we need is something worth considering. I really think until we just look at the hard truth of why teachers leave or in the high turnover, especially in the first year or two, first five years that they leave the profession, is low salaries, especially for entry-level teachers that are frozen at those steps. And I think also a lot of the disrespect and blame for, from everything, from too many people in prison to, you know, to whatever, not competing well with, you know, some other country that has a totally different system. So it's, I think, looking at the teacher shortage is really important and we should probably grapple with that. But I'm not sure having more prep programs is going to solve that problem. I think we have plenty of seats available now. I know a lot of them, a lot of the schools are doing online, more online courses so people can have more flexibility and be in different places. And their enrollment is just plummeting and to the point where some are closing. So I, that said, I think, you know, I would, if we're going to look at considering a moratorium, I agree with the extending it for three months. Looking strategically, I know it's beyond the scope of what you're discussing with the moratorium, but we should at some point have a real discussion about what we can promote to really keep teachers, retain teachers, even if we don't have the power to make it happen, but at least to make recommendations of what we think should be done to keep them.
And I thank you for that comment. I would just like to, I appreciate the board talking about this decision in the larger context of the whole educator pipeline. Just to remind or to reiterate, our logic of bringing it here was not about shortage or not shortage. It was about ability to support the current institutions in offering high-quality programming to the candidates we have. I, we will reiterate that we believe that the shortage issue is not solved by the yes or no to this. That is a separate issue. And Michelle, you just completely articulated it. Recruitment and retention are the two pieces that we have to have a lot. So more, I think you said it well, moratorium, not moratorium. And again, thank you, board, for discussing it in a larger context. But we don't think this has a direct impact on shortage. We think it's a different, our rationale is different.
There's a point of data that might be interesting for the board. Several years ago, we pulled the data to see how many teachers in, that had valid teaching certificates whose last known address was still in Michigan and were under the age of, I think, 60, so basically still of employment age there were in Michigan that were not working as teachers. And there were 100,000.
Teachers, they're just not teaching.
Right. And that's not to say they're not in the field of education because I am one of those people.
Right.
Right.
Anyone else have comments?
No, let me just say though, yeah, I do. Let me just say that if, if things are so bad that they're closing and it's hard getting teachers, then nobody's going to open a new school. So the only reason they would is if they have a model that maybe reduces the cost. Maybe it's more, maybe less overhead and more variable costs. Or maybe there's, you know, I don't know that there's a real concern that things are going to collapse into the wild, wild west. I mean, there are standards or we just looked at standards. So I mean, you know, it's just going to, I don't know. I don't see any downside, quite frankly, to opening it up. And I know I might be in the minority, but you know, I just, I really can't, I don't know. I just can't see that if it's that bad and everybody's closing, nobody's going to open it up. The only reason they would is if they think they can tailor themselves to the customer, a potential teacher, better than anybody else. And I think that's worth trying.
And I think what I heard Vanessa say is it's not about, the moratorium is not about the retention or the attraction of teachers. It's about the department's ability to support.
I think initially she said that was the reason, was the teacher, you know, that we had overabundance of teachers was the original reason for it.
That was the original reason, back in 2005.
I gotta believe they can find the resources. I mean, if we're talking about one, maybe two. I mean, they just said several closed, so what, they have extra capacity in it? I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I think that would be a good thing, the legislature could give them a little bit of extra money if they, if they are tight to the bone and they just can't find any money to.
I think you answered my question because I wanted to go back to what the intent of this, this moratorium. And I think you answered my question and you did too. So I'm in support of.
Okay, thank you. Lupe? I'm sorry, Pam. Sorry, Pam.
So, and I can't exactly remember where we started off on the conversation, Cassandra, where you were saying that it would be some altered.
Selective moratorium?
Well, I guess for me, in all of this conversation that we're having and the last two questions that were raised, I would really prefer to scratch it and to start all over again. Because I don't feel comfortable signing on to something that says moratorium on educator preparation institutions and then talking about how there are too many teachers. I would rather us, I don't know, something else that gets at the crux of what's, what we're talking about now. I mean, we get to the same outcome, but I don't feel comfortable with anything appearing as if I believe that there's too many teachers that are, that are in Michigan. Because we're talking about the Upper Peninsula, but you go up and down the 75 corridor. And once again, it's, again, the house is on fire.
So I hear you say having a different motion rather than the one that we have. Thank you. And Dr. Z?
I would suggest, in view of the support that several have voiced for the three-month moratorium, I move that we substitute the three-month moratorium with the expectation that department will report back and will reconsider it in another three months.
I read the motions, someone.
Lupe did.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
Lupe made the motion and I had Eileen seconding it. Okay.
Would you guys support that? Or should we just vote it down and start over?
Maybe just voting it down and starting over.
That's my recommendation would be, be cleaner. Okay?
Can I withdraw your motion then?
I can withdraw, if it dies for lack of a second.
There you go.
So those in favor of the original motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. So now we will have a new motion. Dr. Z?
I move that we adopt a three-month moratorium and then hear back from the department as to the recommendations going forward.
We're extending it from October 13th.
From October 13th? So we would extend it then through.
And I'm open to six months or whatever you think you need for, maybe, and maybe this should arrive at the desk of our new superintendent. I don't know.
Well, that would put us at July 1st.
Next year.
Lupe?
So, to the chair, is that a good recommendation?
With respect, if you are willing to give us more time to work this into our very heavy work schedule, we will have a better recommendation. The longer you give us, the more thorough our recommendation, the more we can engage stakeholders, the more we can look at our data. So it's kind of, six months would be nicer than three.
Longer than six?
Nine months would be better than six and would take us to the next state superintendent. That is a good point, Dr. Zylee. Again, we want to be responsive to the board and the team is amazing and they do get blood from the stone all the time. That being said, every time we have to move quicker on something, something waits. And some of our more strategic, less urgent priorities will sit while we work on something that's possibly less strategic. This might be less strategic, but now more urgent. So again, we're like, I would love a year moratorium if you're willing to entertain that. If that's too long, then, you know, we defer to the board and their willingness to grant us time. Because we would like to come back with, we understand what you don't want us to come back with is extend the moratorium. You want us to come back with some modified selective or possibly some more data to prove more conclusively why a moratorium is absolutely the right piece. And I hear you also saying that the original intent of the moratorium 15 years ago or 10 years ago about oversupply of teachers is not a valid reason now, which we concur with. Our reason bringing it back was not about we have too many teachers. We, the department does not think we have too many teachers. I don't want, I want to, no, it's a press in the room, but just on record. We do think that we have, we, again, our reason is around technical assistance and capacity to support the development paths we have. That being said, the board has rejected that motion. So when we come back to you, we know we need to come back with not simply extend the moratorium, but come back with a more nuanced or more data to support the original. So again, leave it to the board to recommend a time.
Cloning would be good too.
Also cloning.
Is there another word that you can use instead of moratorium? So I understand this better. What's another word?
A hold? A hold or cessation from approving new providers?
I'm sorry?
Cessation from approving new providers?
So was that your original intent?
Was to stop it for.
You were trying to stop it in first place?
So, yes.
The original motion?
So back when it first happened several, 10 years ago, we, none of us were here, I don't believe.
I was in teacher prep.
Sean was in the department. They brought it forward and said, we have too many teachers. We don't need more programs, moratorium. We have renewed it twice now. This would be the second renewal. This board renewed it in 2015.
Yeah.
Well, some of this board. At that point, it was again about technical assistance, not so much about shortage, but about technical assistance. We continued, so we continue to say, we appreciate the moratorium to allow us to focus on quality of who we have. So that was our intent, bringing it forward this time. This is now the third time you, this board has, or a board, the Board of Education has considered this moratorium.
I mean, if you put something like enhancing EPI number or monitor and support for quality or something like that. And then within that, you are ceasing, I don't know. But that's, I mean, you all are going to probably vote on extending for three months and then you'll have time to think that through.
Or the question is, the question is right now, do we put a hold or a moratorium? If three months, six months, if we do 10 months, it gets us to, if we do nine months, it gets us to July when we don't have a board meeting. If we do 10 months, it gets us to August and that would probably be the new superintendent's first board meeting. If you did a year, it would get, get it to.
Yeah, this more.
To October of 2019.
But now we have a whole year. We're, once again, we're treating alternative certification routes completely differently than we are traditional. And that's one of my, my concerns. If this is such an important thing, then it should be important for everybody.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason to wait for so long. We can change it later, but I just, this new superintendent here for a month isn't going to be able to pay people on a board that it's our responsibility to either extend this or not.
So my original motion was three months? Was three months, who seconded?
I did.
Okay, so we can proceed then?
I want to substitute your motion to say at least six months because they even requesting a year. And this is not a Mickey Mouse job. This is, takes a long time to put together, so they need the time. So if we're going to vote this down and then we give them three months, they need more, they're requesting more than three months.
I'm willing to accept six as a friendly.
Are you willing to amend your motion to six months?
At least six?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let me make sure, go ahead, Michelle.
I was just going to add just something that Tom said. I mean, I think there's, I'm just trying to think, there's ways to reconcile all these concerns. So in making a proposal, if it's a modified one, if, if someone puts forward something that's unique and is, seems like it's sort of a different approach, a different institution puts together something that really seems worth the effort of the department, I think that that's, would be acceptable rather than just having someone, you know, throw it, throw it out there and maybe it's not a viable option or maybe it's not going to be sustainable.
Like alternative.
Right, but it would be from a regular institution. And I would love, I mean, is there a law that says we have to treat the alternatives differently? Is there, that's some sort of a?
Yes.
Like, I would like to make a.
Not in terms of the moratorium, but in their approval process, yes.
Right, so there's a law on that. Well, I would like to maybe make.
The traditional should follow that same process then?
Yeah, I got, I think, I understand what you're saying. I just, I just see a lot of, you know, like, when we have an oversupply of schools, it's a structural problem because then the resources, instead of being concentrated to be effective, become diluted and less effective. That's, so that's also a concern when we have limited funds to do, to do things. So I, I just wish there was a way to treat everybody in a way that ensures quality.
I just want to be clear on the motion. So you are saying three months hold on the moratorium? Or three months extension of the mor. I mean, whichever. Extension, that's what I thought. Okay, I thought it was extension.
So it's recommend the state Board of Education approve a six-month extension.
Thank you, okay.
On the new educator preparation institution approval. Period. Okay, so we have motion, we have it seconded. Is there any more discussion? Okay, I'll take, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the state Board of, oh, thank you to Vanessa and Leah and Sean. Thank you very much for being here. Approval of the state Board of Education meeting scheduled for 2019. We have a proposed meeting scheduled for 2019. The regular meetings are scheduled for the second Tuesday of each month. And the board's retreat is scheduled for the fourth Wednesday in May. The board is being asked to approve the 2019 State Board of Education meeting scheduled today. Motion please?
Don't move.
Second?
Support.
Any discussion?
Can you check this with the holiday calendars?
Yes. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Marty Ackley, our Director of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update. Marty, welcome to the board table.
Good afternoon. As usual, you saved the balls for last, so I appreciate that. The legislature was in session this week and now it's going to be out till the end of the month. But the House Committee on Education Reform did meet this week and took testimony on several bills. Among them was a bill, House Bill 5707, that would retain the percentage of a student's growth and assessment data measure on the state assessment at 25% to be used for ed evals, educator evaluations, which current law has going up to 40% this year. So this would keep it at 25%. Other legislation discussed was House Bill 6314, which would codify a public innovation district designation and created a commission to take appeals of districts that have applied to become innovation districts but had been denied. Now MDE has an innovation council, it's been in place for several years, that consists of MDE staff, local superintendents, retired superintendents, charter school representation and ISD auditors. That council works with local districts on their ideas for innovation and provides support and guidance on how they can get to where they want to be within state and federal laws. So the commission that would be created would be able to take appeals if a district had been denied innovation district designation by that council and by the superintendent. MDE staff is currently going through this legislation. It's quite detailed and at the same time, it's vague in places. But we're going through the legislation to assess the impact that it would have if it was enacted. So there's that legislation. Again, it was taken only for testimony. There is, there is no next House Education Reform Committee scheduled at this time. The legislature's back at the end of the month. So I'm not. The legislature's back at the end of the month, so I'm not sure what the plan is for that bill. It's a two-bill set. And finally, at the August state board meeting, it was brought up that the board worked to establish and advocate a set of legislative priorities, and I'd like to defer now to Cassandra to discuss that further.
Well, not a whole lot to necessarily say. We talked about, you know, we have a new, we're going to have a new legis, group of legislators come in, we're gonna have a new governor, new state leadership. So, I think the idea was, it would be good if we started working on kind of what are our legislative and executive priorities as the State Board of Education, so that at the time that there is some changeover at the state, we have some specific things that we might wanna advocate, and rather than simply react every time the legislature comes up with something, or the governor comes up with something, to have our own set of priorities that we can say, "These are the things that we think are really necessary if we wanna move the needle." So, I just wanted to kind of open up the conversation. Before, we had had kind of a chicken and egg conversation about, does the legislative committee come up with this and bring it to the board, or does the board come up with it and bring it to legislative committee? And I think Eileen's point was well-taken, that for transparency's sake, it probably makes more sense to have the conversation at the board level, and then if there are specific things that we wanna look at, we can ask the legislative committee to do a little deeper dive into that, maybe come up with some criteria or specifics along those areas. So, I just wanted to open up. I don't think we have to make any decisions today, but something that we should probably think about, and if there are any specific things that we wanna move forward.
Following up on the last conversation, I'd say teacher retention and support.
I guess, would it make more sense to do this after November? I mean, I love the, the idea, and I like not being always reactionary, so I love what you're going towards. And I think we talked about, you know, the luncheon that we had with legislators and stuff, but no, I like this idea. I just, I think there's gonna be a lot of bipartisan ideas, but there also could be none, and so before we start wrangling for the next couple of months, maybe, or appear to be wrangling, I don't know.
I, I agree with you, I think it's a little premature, but I also wanted to just kind of introduce the topic, so that as we move closer to that date, we're kind of thinking of some things that, you know, we're a four-four board right now, so if there's things that we agree on, I would say that's probably a good direction to head in, either way, so...
Any other comments?
Well, I had, I had a, it's sort of reactionary. So, in one of the board briefs, there was this discussion about, what is it, PID?
Yeah, so, what you had just mentioned, the House bill that creates the innovation district?
Yes. Right. So, I, I mean, I still have lots of questions around it, and I, I, I'm not exactly sure what it is and the purpose of it, although I do see in the notes that it would circumvent the requirement for cybers to have that hour of teaching. I don't know if that has anything to do with the legislation being proposed, but I, it raised a lot of red flags, and I think, anyway, I don't know if there's anything more that you have to say on it, or, but if on lists of things to discuss, not only the legislation, but what is the impetus? Why? Why?
Can I just read this?
Yeah.
This is Sheila's analysis of it. Well, this one paragraph. A PID would be allowed to operate a year-round program, design courses based on the interests of individual pupils, utilize community experts in the educational process, and adopt and implement an alternative assessment of pupil progress that meets the requirements of ESA. A PID also would be allowed to offer extended learning opportunities if the opportunities and a mandated policy on extended learning both meet prescribed requirements in the bill. An extended learning opportunity would mean a learning program that occurs outside of a school setting. So, if, has the department done a formal analysis, because this is not in our usual format, and I don't know if that's a product that you...
Right. What Sheila provided in the board briefs was a summary of the concepts in the bill. There's a lot of detail in the bill that we are, like I said, we've shared it amongst the Department of Education to assess the impact if this bill were to be enacted, to be enacted. But there are red flags, there are good things that could happen with this, but there are things in the bill as written now that would be problematic, that we are, that we are...
Concerned about. So, so has the bill been dropped, or is it in committee?
Yes.
It's been dropped.
It's been introduced, and it had a committee hearing this week.
Okay. And are you doing, are you in triage? Are you negotiating?
Yes.
So...
Well, we are in triage. We are, we are reviewing the bill and assessing the impact if the bill were to be, would be enacted.
Right, then, this is what, this is what the repercussions do.
Right.
So, when, how fluid is this? Do you get the sense that it's on a quick passage path, or is it...
It's unclear at this time, because I, as I mentioned, there is no next House Education Committee meeting scheduled. They don't come back in decision until the 25th of September, I think, so...
So, we're not in a position at this point to give an analysis to the committee and the board for October?
We're developing a fuller analysis now.
Also, we have requested a meeting with legislators to be able to discuss what the issues are that led to, what the impetus was that led to this bill, to this House bill. So, we've requested a meeting to have some discussion around it.
Who introduced the bill?
Representative Kelly, who's also the chair of the committee.
Yeah, makes me think it's gonna go somewhere. Yeah. What is it, is it a school district? Is it another EAA? Is, what, what is it?
Well, districts right now, through the, through our current existing innovation council, they can come to the council and say, "I've got this great innovative idea." And we're all for innovation, and we've been doing innovative ideas since former Superintendent Mike Flanagan was, was here, and we had Project Reimagine, which was many years ago, which has continued, now it's becoming Innovation Council. Where districts would come here with an innovative idea, we would look at it, we would work with the district and say, you know, "You can do this already," or "This is how you can do this," working, again, within the, within the constructs of state and federal law. So, we do this now, and I think one of the issues is, is that there may have been a district that wasn't, that got denied by this council, and so they went to Representative Kelly and said, "We need a way to appeal that process."
Do you think it was the cybers?
No.
No. No, with the 12, the 10,000?
No, it's not cybers.
1,000 whatever hours.
Sorry, but it's possible, I'm just checking right now to see whether House TV has the tape, because a lot of, I watched part of it, I was interrupted, that's why I can't give you a better description of this, but the conversation was broader-ranging than something that alarmed me. It sounded like it was something that the, could be of use to any school that was doing Marshall Plan, I could be wrong on that.
We haven't worked with him on this in the context of the Marshall Plan.
So, you don't know? Yeah, we don't know. But I think if, if people were concerned, were to watch that segment, we would be in a better shape for worries, and we could, we could focus the concerns that we've got a little more clearly. Doesn't mean that the conversation in a John Austin word was wholesome enough to indicate all of the possibilities, but it was a pretty complete conversation.
Right, right.
Someone shoved down our throats really fast.
Well, that's why, that's why watching, watching the hearing might be of help.
Yeah, but, you know.
But I also...
They only meet once a month.
I'm just curious, the alternative assessment, I mean, doesn't that put us into violation of ESA?
Not necessarily, because remember that they said that we could be doing portfolio, I think I tossed my notes, but the portfolios, extended performance tasks, so if the, and, ooh, help me out here, the New England states have a consortium that has put together, I think, a competency-based, Vanessa's over there, they've tried to do this, and I think it's within the realm of, it was, it's something that ESA allows. So, and there was a pilot program for doing non-conventional assessments, which Michigan didn't participate in. So, there are avenues from other states that probably would work. I don't know whether, Vanessa's over there being very quiet, so I will...
When we come back to the board table? Yes, so, the challenge with any sort of assessment that isn't the state assessment is, at least under federal regulation and state, federal regulation in particular, the ESA flexibility, it still has to meet requirements and comparability with the state assessment. So, in New Hampshire, for example, what they did is four districts, so no, four districts in a state of like, got together and came up with portfolio assessments, other forms of assessments, and they gave them parallel at the same time with the state assessment for a few years, so they could show comparability, and then they eventually showed that they basically were measuring the same thing, and they used them. That is how the ESA Innovative Assessment Pilot Authority is built, and why we did not go in for it the first time, because it was not at that time our assessment vision. We wanted not just the state system and an alternative system, we wanted maybe some districts being able to do a variety of other things.
Some different types of innovative assessments.
Right. When we weren't going to define this other little pot over here. USAD said no to that, so now we're back looking at a more cohesive assessment system, kind of built on the New Hampshire model and some other model about ways to assess student progress through other types of assessments that would be made available. So, we are working on this outside of this bill, this is something, we've long been interested in innovation and assessment, ways to have other measures of student learning. So, we are looking at the flexibilities. So, yeah, it's a, it's kind of a long answer, too, it's, there's some allowability, but you, there's a lot of steps to get there. It's not a, not a flip-the-switch sort of deal. New Hampshire spent, I wanna say, oh, a solid five or six years on development before they were ever approved to use it. So, it's a lot, if we commit to it, it's a long road. And again, it's a dual testing for a while, until you show that your system is comparable.
Well, I won't be on the State Board of Education.
Our loss.
And I can't find it on House Ed in the, it could be the iPad format, but it's just not pulling it up.
Oh, we're getting a link.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Back to my original issue, just think about what legislative priorities you might want in a next month or two, we can kind of hash some of those out.
And we can start making our own lists, then bringing them to the table.
Yep, here it is.
And we'll put this back on, future agenda item.
Good.
It is, it is here. I just was searching in the wrong format, but it is, the last Thursday's hearing is here. On House Education TV.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you, Caroline, for sending us that link. All right. Comments by State Board of Education members? Are there any board members who wish to offer comments this afternoon?
Yeah, we, some of us got a correspondence from somebody in Tecumseh that said that they recalled four of their school board members, and the other three were up anyway. So, all of their board is up because of competency-based education, and I think it was the pilot that has been out there a little bit, but that it was implemented, I mean, it was just a lot of computers being introduced, and kids on computers, and real problems. And so, they, to the extent that they recalled all their, all the members that were not gonna be up this year, so there is some, and they commended us for all of our questions, and I think, at least going forward, you know, and they said that there was no transparency, I kind of hearken back to the Marshall Plan that's gonna force districts to be advocates for something that has no evidence that it actually works, and so, and it very well could be harmful. And so, I, you know, it's just a little validation that they appreciated, that at least, that there's some skepticism, and that as it, as this goes into other districts, that maybe parents that are gonna push back are not alone, that there's, you know, the board is expressing skepticism, and that it's, you know, may end up being a fad that needs to go by the wayside.
Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none from, yes, Michelle?
I know you want recommendations on the guidance, but in looking at it, I just wanted to say, I was hoping that there'd be a little bit more explicit guidance on including people with disabilities in there, in incorporating them, because I know, like, for instance, with the CTE programs, we've asked for, you know, even though students are accommodated, the curriculum is often not modified to meet their needs, and they're just left out of the CTE. So, these opportunities that might come, you know, I do share, the overall view is I'm, I am very concerned about this all being digitalized, digital...
Digitized.
Digitalized, digitized education, which makes teachers less relevant. That's my main concern. But if we're gonna have a program to help people, I certainly don't, or supposedly to, you know, advance opportunities, I don't want the opportunities to be limited to people who have, who have certain abilities, and the people who desperately need, that, so if that could be included in the guidance as well.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll go on to the next item, which is future meeting dates. The next State Board of Education meeting will be held at Lenaway Intermediate School District in Adrian, Michigan. That's on Tuesday, October 9th. It is a regular meeting that will begin at 9:30 a.m., and as mentioned earlier, Lenaway ISD is one of our partners in our work to scale up multi-tiered system of support, and I know they were very excited to be able to share the progress of their partnership, their experiences with MDE, and the progress that they are making to scale up MTSS in several of the districts within their ISD. Following our, yes, Dr. Z?
Sorry, is there a street address for the Lenaway ISD?
We will get you a street address. We will be happy to send that to you.
And for anybody that needs it, it'll be at the top of the agenda also, so...
Okay, great, thank you.
And then our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. That's a 9:30 meeting here in the Hannah Building, and then followed by Tuesday, December 11th, 2018, 9:30 regular meeting here at the Hannah Building. As a reminder to board members, if there are any specific items that you would like to see included on future agendas, please let us know. We'll be working the next few weeks to finalize agendas for next month's meeting. I also wanna thank the board today for your engagement and your involvement and your really thoughtful and reflective questions, and our rich discussion around some really complex agenda items today. So, thank you so much for your very active participation, greatly appreciated. And with that, I would say, have safe travels.
Motion to adjourn.
And motion, motion to adjourn.
We support.
Support.
Cassandra.